And we have time for public comment right now. Does anybody want to make a public comment? No? Okay. I'd just like to welcome Dr. Burnham, our new superintendent. She's in her second, third week of the school, third week already. It does go by quickly. It does. Summer goes by quickly. So we have warrants on that table to approve and a line item transfer. Do you want to tell us about the transfer, Mr. Cassidy?
So there are two transfers, well, there's two actions that will be presented to you tonight by the business office. Number one is a transfer from Turkey Hill Elementary School. They are proposing moving $2,650 from their work book account to their reading supply account for an upcoming purchase. Obviously, we would not present this if we did not support this transfer. The secondary transfer is, I'm getting a feeling this is a new action that's being done by town hall. So at the end of every year, you probably know this, there are pending invoices that come in after July 1st. And we've received the product, we're just waiting for the vendor to provide the invoice. In the past, I've been told is that there's been a communication from the school to the business office, to the town accountant, to carry over those purchase orders so we can process those invoices over the next few weeks and maybe over the next month. There's a new practice this year which involves the school committee basically approving those transfers or those carryovers. And that's what you'll see here in front of you. I am sorry for the delay.
So again, these are items that we've received, but the invoice just hasn't made it through its process yet.
Right. And there's some other circumstances around that, either a delay in shipment or something like that. And the town accountant is allowing us to carry forward those funds to purchase them over the next few months.
Why are some of them from last summer?
My guess is those open POs that they're just, they use during the school year. And they're just waiting for the final invoice on that open PO.
Oh, so it's like a whole year thing?
Yeah, it's a whole year thing. Is there a total on that?
Yeah, what's the total on the bottom line? Do you have a copy? Can I write it on here? Can I write it on here?
Do my guess.
What is it, sixty thousand?
Sixty thousand, five hundred and one dollars and sixty three cents. So I talked to all the school secretaries about this and we're very confident that even a lot of these POs that are being presented to you, there are invoices, some of those invoices may be in that warrant right there, but because they're being cut after July 1st, they still need your approval.
Oh, okay.
So it's, I would imagine, we're going to move pretty quickly to resolve the sixty thousand dollars. And, you know, I am going to work next year to make sure that that amount is not this high, especially if I have to get school committee approval. And I'll make every effort to reduce that amount and have an explanation why I, we need to carry that forward.
So this was new this year? Their process, this is new for the town hall this year?
From what I understand, yeah. So speaking to the secretaries, they've never gone through this process to get this, to get it to me, to get it to you, to sign. Maybe you're familiar with us, but I, they're saying that it's never been, it's never gone through this process. I haven't spoken to-
You don't remember? I don't actually recall it either.
I haven't spoken to the town accountant, whether this was some sort of recommendation to an audit or anything like that, or if, you know, or it's just good bookkeeping.
So this means already setting an accounts payable account?
Yeah.
So it's just waiting to be distributed?
Yeah.
So you recommend approval?
I recommend approval and I recommend that you hold me accountable to make sure that I reduce that amount for next year.
Yeah, it seems like a lot.
Yeah.
And some of the dates are old. Even the ones this year, March.
Yeah. There were some late POs that were purchased for, you know, facility issues that came up. I know there's several POs in there from the graduation, graduation expenses, and we're just waiting to have the vendor provide a proper invoicing.
Mr. Cassidy, we're looking at how task practices have been done, opening POs at the beginning of the year, and maybe making some adjustments to how that's all done throughout the year so that makes good sense if you close out a PO but you need additional funds that you open another PO.
Another one.
And not have one open to be spending against for the entire year. So we're going to take a good look at that. And I think that that would probably go a long way towards helping minimize the number of open POs that would need to be carried forward.
Yeah, I mean, I'm used to writing specific POs to specific items instead of adding an open PO. And I'm not trying to discourage the district from not having open POs, there's always emergencies that we need to respond to, purchases and whatnot. But just to provide clarity on what our money is going for, as it can be right on the purchase order, pallets of paper, pens, books, whatever it is, make the purchase order specific. So we just had that conversation this week and looking at the multitude of things going on with us, you know, we're going to try to clean up the way we do our business a little. You know, I don't think it's going to reduce the number of POs, but it'll give clarity on what we're spending our money on.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the line item transfer and the carryover of the year-end conferences for fiscal year 2018.
The total's on the back.
For the total of sixty two thousand, five hundred and one dollars, or sixty thousand, five hundred and one dollars and sixty three cents.
One second.
All in favor?
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, you all received the minutes? Did you have time to review them? And they had corrections that were hopefully incorporated, at least, yeah. So do you have, did you have any questions?
No. I was the first to correct them.
So I'll take a motion to approve that minute.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 20th regular session, June 25th regular session, and the June 25th executive session.
One second.
All in favor?
All right.
Now we have our new superintendent's report.
So first off, I'd like to say how happy I am to be here and excited for the opening of schools so we can start to do some really exciting work for the year ahead. It's been a very busy couple of weeks, actually. I had the opportunity to go to a full day workshop as part of the new superintendent's induction program, and you'll hear more about that with the presentation later this evening. It was a really phenomenal day, and I thank you all for your support and allowing me to participate in that program. I think it's going to be not only beneficial for me, but for the entire district. I also had the good fortune to attend the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's annual conference. A lot of great workshops, we had an opportunity to hear from the new commissioner, who has a different outlook. And I'm excited to hear more about what the future holds for the state of Massachusetts in terms of new direction under this commissioner, as I learn more about what that might look like. I'll be happy to report back on that as well. As you know, we have some key hires that need to be made. We'll hear a little bit more later in the evening with the report on the primary principal school search committee, but I reposted the position as a primary position, an interim position for the year, and the posting actually closes today. So we've had some good response in terms of the number of applicants, so we're hopeful that we have some very good candidates in that staff pool. The intermediate high school position, we had fewer applicants, but that process is moving along and hope to potentially resolve that hire relatively soon, hopefully in the next few days. And we have moved ahead and scheduled some interviews for the athletic director position this week as well. The goal really would be to have somebody appointed to all of these positions before the end of July. Definitely by August 1st is the ultimate goal. We need these people in their positions so that we can make other staff hires in these school budgets. So as soon as we have a definitive candidate that we're moving forward and appointing to the positions, be providing updates.
How many applicants did you, for the athletic director?
There were more than 50 applicants for the athletic director position. And, you know, we sort of vetted through and were looking for folks who had some experience. And we do have some candidates who look pretty strong in terms of the application that they have submitted. So we're hopeful.
And how many for the principal?
The high school principal? Six.
Okay.
But so far for the primary, we've got more than 20?
Forty-one?
Forty-one.
Forty-one?
Let's see if there are any who submit last minute applications.
Today?
Yes.
What time does it close today?
Midnight.
Midnight?
Yep.
Final call.
It could be. I heard they do that.
Okay. And that's it. So we're hopeful, we're really hopeful that we'll have some good folks that we can put in a position as interim, you know, to be good stewards and help move the district forward as best they can with the temporary position. And we'll start permanent searches, I would anticipate after the holidays, to fill these permanently for the next school year.
So Eliza is unavailable today, so we do not have a student reps report. I don't know that she would have anything to report with no school.
They're all doing some vacation.
Well, I hope so. Our new business first item is middle school athletics presentation, so Ms. Yarke needs. Who do you want to step to the podium first? Field hockey.
I'm sorry?
Field hockey.
Do you have a copy of the proposal? Each of you have one?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hello.
It's all about sports today.
It is. Good thing. This started, I'd say last fall. My children will be incoming sixth graders up here at the middle school, and we've been playing field hockey through an Nishova system. I'm a teacher at Nishova, so we were able to play through Nishova, starting kindergarten through grade five. Due to scheduling and whatnot, we are not going to be able to play for the middle school. So we were looking to bring back the middle school field hockey program here in Lunenburg. It was a thriving program, very successful prior to 2014 when they discontinued the program due to the construction of the new building, and then adding lacrosse as a varsity sport. So I've submitted a proposal and hope that possibly we can bring it back. It aligns with the district's strategic goal number seven for the increasing middle school activities, so definitely I assume that it's on the town's radar as well as the school department's radar to increase activities at the middle school.
Okay, so, and you gave us everything we asked for.
I hope so.
You did. The only, did you talk about the transportation, your figure?
Yes.
Where'd you give it?
I asked my athletic director, Nishova, as well as Mr. Sivatino here, who is acting athletic director. And he told me that if I figured that, that was a high estimate.
Okay.
He said usually it would figure probably the three to 350 depending on where we had to go.
Okay.
Not every middle school around us has field hockey, so we may have to go to like Quavon or Narragansett. So we may be up a little bit higher on those costs versus, you know, when we go to play Pittsburgh, it won't be as much.
Okay.
He did indicate, when we spoke with him, that there would be, creative space could be found for us for two to three practices a week, using the fields that, the other players that are away at a game, there's a grassy area, there's also right out here, yep, that definitely didn't see a problem with two, possibly three a week.
Okay. The coach?
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that, did he say anything about posting that position?
He didn't. We actually already had a coach who was in-house called Therian, who is a teacher here at the middle school, has had previous field hockey experience coaching, was very interested when we started this whole process of implementing, or re-implementing, I should say, the program here. She had come to us with the hopes of possibly being able to be the coach.
Okay. Mr. Cassidy, do they have to post that?
If the district is paying through payroll system, we have to post the position.
Okay, so the first year?
The first year, yes. So the way I broke this down is ultimately, we would like it to be absorbed, obviously, into the school budget, knowing that, you know, you can't jump in full feet at first. So we sort of spread it out throughout a five-year process. The first year being fully funded by the players, basically two practices a week, four home games, $220 a player, oh, sorry, $200 a player, and it looked like that could get us through funding the program ourselves for the first year. I looked for a user fee for the middle school, the only one I could find that was online was the $60 for the track team. I fully expected there would be a user fee for this, for any middle school athletic program, just not sure where, what that number would fall. I took it at somewhere between $75 to $100 for a user fee. And then what I did progressively each year is the school, I stepped back to $200 incrementally and then increased what the school would have to pay, the district would need to contribute.
Right. So you reduced this off funding.
Yep.
What about, so scheduling games, I know that there's been scheduling already done.
We're in a holding pattern, yep. We have reached out, Jen Dari, who is the high school coach, had sort of made some tentative arrangements in hopes that we would be able to put this through. She knew enough people that we possibly would be able to get, we may not get four games this year, you know, as many games as we had hoped this year, but, you know, some games are better than that.
Squeeze us in somewhere.
Squeeze us in somewhere. We're willing to be flexible.
And because this is a fall sport, you want us to?
Yeah, you know, we started this in March, and we just kept getting kind of bumped and bumped and bumped. Met with the athletic advisory, you know, and then with the end of the year and the new superintendent, we just sort of, this was the first opportunity of being able to get on an agenda. So this sort of, I hate to say a do or die, we're kind of in a crunch time.
No, no.
So that's where we are. So that is my hopes.
Do you have anything to add, Jim? Because you were the athletic advisory chair.
Well, based on the discussions that we had within that group when Ron came to present to us, or to at least talk to us about it, it did seem that we didn't, we were kind of missing the boat, that we don't have a feeder program into the high school in the area at all. There's no mechanism for us locally to do that. There seemed to be pretty strong support amongst the group that we move forward with this, and now that we have some numbers, I think it's worth looking a little deeper. I would, I'd love to be able to give an answer tonight.
I think the first year.
Well, yeah, first year. And so I think what we need to do is, you know, we're going to start pledging process in, what, two months?
Right.
So we need to start thinking about how we can start. And honestly, you know, this year five is, you know, $4,300 to the cost of the school. It doesn't seem that excessive to me that we wouldn't be able to find some spot within the next five years to be able to cover that.
In athletics.
In athletics, yeah.
One would hope, but I remember from the budget stuff and how we had to cut things back that schools were asking for as far as materials and professional development and teachers. I'd hate to promise something that we-
Well, I think we could say yes this fall.
Year one. And then what happens-
The program would also, you know, there are so many programs out there that, for example, Nishova is totally self-funded, but they don't use, the school doesn't contribute the fields, they had less field space, they had their own transportation. The biggest thing that we're looking for is field space, you know, that that's, you know, we need to be flexible as to how much the user fee or whatever it costs to play field hockey would be. It's not, $200 is not out of the realm, you know, a basketball, it's certainly significantly cheaper than paying for a club sport for field hockey, which is really sort of our only choice at this point if you wanted to continue playing. So I definitely know that, I know the budget is tight, I get that, but I think, you know, there's several parents that have come to me and, you know, what can we do? How can we get this going? You know, so I think that they'd be flexible.
I understand, you had mentioned something, you were also looking at grants?
Yep. There is USA Field Hockey does a grant, so we, you know, we-
So there's some possibility.
So there's some possibility with that as well, for at least, you know, equipment, things like that, you need to help coach, put the coaching, things, you know, from there.
And, oh, so how are you going to run, like, tryouts? Is it going to be-
There are no tryouts. That, basically, we feel that if you want to play this first year, play this first year. We anticipate these doing 25 and 30 kids, 30 kids sort of being the max. And then if we, you know, needed, she said what we would have to do is look at being flexible, and obviously with 30 kids on a team for a game, not everybody's going to play the whole game.
Right.
You know, so, but with that understanding that, and not everybody would be available to play every game. So maybe a rotating game that set up a team, so you play the first game, this set plays the first game, this set plays the second game, so everybody sort of gets equal access to playing time as well.
Okay. And this is for six to eight?
Six to eight.
Six to eight. Well, I would like to say we could go ahead with the first year and see how it goes and then figure out funding for the next year. Like, year by year, we would be able to say yes to the first year there.
Yeah, at least, I would agree with that. I don't know, you know, it's kind of muddy for you and your parents. How do you feel about-
I feel, okay, I actually brought one of the other parents with me just to sort of back up, so it wasn't just me. Courtney Devoyne, she's actually one of the parents who has started some playing with us at Nishova since kindergarten as well, and he can maybe talk a little bit, you know, what he thinks the parent responsibility as well.
But you have to move up here.
Okay.
She wants to on camera.
Come on, I'll share the spotlight.
I think, I know that there are a lot of girls that would be interested, I think the parents, we've said at this point that we'd be happy to do, you know, whatever it takes to, you know, for the girls to play, because it's just, playing now is not an option. So obviously, you know, we don't want to pay $200 every year, but I think if, you know, there was a, you know, a hard look and said, hey, we got to figure something out here, I think parents would be fine with that. I just think that the girls, I think that plenty of girls want to play.
And just remember, when they get to high school, you're going to pay $250 anyway.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
To play. Right? So just have that in the back of your head.
I will.
It's still less than high school athletics.
Yeah, so I think, I don't, I don't see it as an issue. I think we've also talked about raising money separately.
Funders.
You know, so whatever that would take, you know, I think we'd be willing to, and we just want to see it happen, you know?
A lot of people want to see that.
I think so, too.
Yeah. And I think, I think there'd be people that would be willing to, you know, step up and donate, at least to offset the cost.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like a lot of money, it's just a lot of money to us.
Oh, I understand, no, I understand how tight the budget is, you know, just, and like I said, the biggest thing with any sport is just the insurance in the field. Like, as long as we're covered under a school, as a middle school athletic, that's a huge cost right there that has already disappeared.
Right.
It's just, A, either paying for field space and B, paying for that insurance.
So, Mr. Cassidy, is there additional cost by adding a new athletic program that you can see in terms of insurance, or?
I think it just falls under-
It just falls under the insurance.
Looking at the budget, I mean, it's, you know, and goalie equipment is very, very expensive, and it's, it looks like they have a plant, a rotating plant on equipment, which is good, good to see. I don't think there'd be additional cost. You know, we might have to work out something on how the coach gets paid when it comes into the middle school student activity account. But those are, those are details.
Those are long. That's fine.
We just want to make sure that you can start.
Put them right.
Start this year and then buy some-
Wouldn't it automatically, like, the parents would pay a user fee to the school? And it would be, yeah, yeah.
We would have to set that up with the schools.
That's okay.
You have to, yeah.
Pass or account, yeah. And Emily could do that, obviously, you know, willing to help out in whatever way that I can get this going.
Well, then I would like to make a motion that we approve the field hockey plan for year one with the understanding, with the understanding that year two we'll be looking at the budget and seeing how we can bring that in.
With no guarantee.
With no guarantee, yeah, that we can absorb any, but certainly start with year one.
All right. I'm okay with that. All in favor? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Delampant, basketball.
Hello. Thank you for taking the time to meet with both of us. And I don't have a, a daughter that's in the pipeline for field hockey, but what she's saying is, is makes sense. I don't have any buddy in there, but it makes a lot of sense to have that opportunities that we used to have. I would also like to thank Mr. Lebec and the Athletic Advisory Committee for helping at least have a voice for us and give us a chance to voice some of our thoughts and opinions. I'd like to tell you who I am and how I got here. I've lived in town for a long number of years. I have a son that is in sixth grade and a daughter that's in fourth grade who both are involved with school athletics in a variety of levels. My son being in middle school athletics, my daughter with the, the Girls on the Run program that's been offered to her in Lunenburg Town has provided many different programs that have benefited them both socially, athletically, and a variety of things. Particularly those two things, like my son being on the track team and cross-country team and my daughter being in Girls on the Run through the elementary. I've also been involved in helping both my son and daughter involved with basketball and that's kind of how I got here, in that the parents of both of my son and daughter's teams were very, were talking to me, oh geez, you know, how come the kids are doing well? How come they don't have a chance to play for their middle school? I said, I don't know, I don't have an answer to that. My, my kids are on the younger side, so I, I did some asking around and I know that there were some. Years ago, there was a gentleman who was a teacher in the school now who used to coach the team and it, I don't, he said, well, I just wasn't coaching anymore and then we didn't have a team. I was like, that doesn't seem like a great answer. The, the kids are what it's about, it's not if, you know, if we didn't have, you know, somebody to, to coach, I would assume we would have looked out and found that, but I was not around. So there were a bunch of parents that were excited and said, well, we'll, we'll start writing emails. And I said, don't do that, let me just ask some questions. And so that's how I arrived with Mr. Lebec. So once I arrived there, basically, I, I was at the point of starting to ask questions and, and, you know, what is it that other towns provide or have for opportunities for kids? And what would that look like for Lunenburg? So my numbers that I have here are from, I worked as a teacher at North Northsex Regional, so I reached out to our athletic director and asked him for numbers that were, hey, tell me, how does it work for you guys? And I would get those numbers and to present to you. So basically, a couple of reasons. Number one is the parents were asking me to try to reach out and say, why does Lunenburg not have this? And I didn't, to my opinion, get any great answers from it, it was just kind of, I don't know, we're not sure, it, it wasn't there and nobody's really put any effort to try to provide an opportunity for kids. The other thing that I did with my research was I said, asked my athletic director, said, well, does some towns have basketball and some towns not? And on the back of my paper, there are two towns in all of the region that don't. So the, the back says that, you know, I'm not going to read all the ones that do, but the ones, the towns with middle school basketball are those of the above. Some of them are regional schools, therefore they have two, two basketball teams per school. And the teams, the towns without are Menon and us, and I, I don't know why Menon doesn't have it. And to be frank, I really still don't know exactly why Lunenburg doesn't have it. I guess things happened in the past before my time. So that was one thing that was kind of jarring to me, it was like, wow, you don't, that was surprising to the least, but it's nonetheless something where our kids don't have a winter opportunity, which is my third bullet. Like, if we provide different opportunities, like I gave you an example of my son, it was really helpful for him academically because he had some, some opportunities to, to do and have successes in another area, which led to him hopefully doing better with school. But there isn't really another school-based opportunity for kids, which basketball would provide for both the boys and the girls. And other things that I think about in my past life, I've been, been a coach, and it's been wonderful to see, as you will know with all, all things that happen at schools, to bring schools together and whether they field hockey in the fall and to have a basketball game in the wintertime, in my mind, I see eight games that happen at home and the school comes together and kids that are doing Project Three Fifty-One have fundraisers out in the front and it, it becomes a community-based thing where kids can come together and be part, proud of their school and proud of their peers and have enthusiasm for, for all of that. So the problems that we have are obviously as similar as like, you know, who's involved, who's interested? What I tried to do is reach out to families that were, that were in eighth, seventh, sixth, and I knew some of the fifth and fourth grade families from, from my daughter's group. And I didn't ask anybody to, to come because I didn't know that this was the forum. I thought this would be, hey, you know, what do you think? But I had a massive amount of people saying, hey, this would be really great. I think it would be wonderful for kids on both sides, meaning both boys and girls. So that would be participants. I really genuinely think there's more than enough kids, kids interested to field a basketball team of fifteen boys and fifteen girls. That's the norm in, in middle school basketball. Expenses, what I tried to do was ask my athletic director, the seventeen ninety-five came from their Step Three that North Northsex is highest paid coach at the middle school. So that was where that number came from. The buses, the basketball team games would be sixteen games for the winter. Those sixteen games would be based on not school size but by location. So he said that they try to schedule, Lunenburg would play Fitchburg, even though Fitchburg's a bigger school because it's right next door, therefore the busing goes down for all schools. So we would technically, typically not play Aquabond because it's a long bus ride, saving all schools money on buses. So that's where he gave me that two seventy-five number. The buses is one bus per, per game, meaning there would be eight buses per year because the boys and girls travel together, the girls play first, the boys play second, and then vice versa, whatever the, the home gym would say. So that was the, the busing. The officials is sixty dollars per game, so one twenty total per, per, per trip that we would do. And those are the expenses that would be recurring every single year and then uniforms are about fifty bucks, give or take, that would have to happen at the beginning. So all in all, i- if there was no funding from the school, which was my sort of assumption to get started, it'd be two hundred and twenty-five dollars per player. Luckily, it came out nice and round for me. The, so that basically comes out to an annual expense for both boys and girls of sixty-seven fifty, so, you know, about, about thirty-five hundred dollars for, well, it was thirty-five hundred dollars for the girls, give or take. I didn't postulate, like, years three, uh, two, three, four, and five, because I didn't know if there would be support from folks or if, I didn't, and I was sort of assuming that the budget is pretty tight and that this is going to be what it's going to be. And if there was support, great, and if there wasn't, I, I feel like families would still be supportive to have that opportunity. The, the other issue is the gym time and that's a challenge in that, that we have the one gym and there's lots of activities in the gym. I know at a prior meeting with Mr. Lebec, there's lots going on in the gym. So at that meeting, we discussed the opportunity that there's, like, there's probably, did you have a question?
No.
Oh. From five to six, there's, there's a slot at T C P. After the teen center's done their activities, it'll be four adult activities. Somebody brought up, and, and I'm a hoop junkie, but this, I didn't, I wasn't the one who brought this up, but maybe have a bit of skill work just before school, get their bodies moving, and that would be an optional thing if kids wanted to do that. And, and let me back, drop this a bit, is that, you know, the other middle school kids in the other towns that all had, had, yes, they get about four days of practice per week and sixteen next, sixteen games. And, and that continuity with a particular coach and having a number of practices per, per week and putting on your, your, your school's uniform, it's, it's, it's an additional thing that's really good looking forward. And there might be possible gym slots. I'm a believer that, yeah, I'm sure that thing is booked, I would assume it's pretty close. But there might be some days, if you think about it, if the boys and girls varsity teams are playing both away games, could there be opportunities for the middle school kids in that? It's something that I don't know. But, you know, if there's, if there's support behind it and there's a way to, to do some scheduling, utilizing that main gym, I think it could probably be found, but I can't tell you yes. So that's who I am, that's how I got here with the families that asked me to sort of reach out and ask questions. I'm sure I missed a bunch of things, so if you have questions.
Um, did you talk to Pete Patno about it yet?
I have not.
Okay, because a lot of the gym time is taken by the rec and travel teams?
Yes.
So that's something we really have to look into.
Meaning would Pete let, and I don't know.
No, we don't, we don't know their agreement, I don't know how many days he has.
He has, so I know.
With Mr. Wanda, Mr. Wanda does the scheduling.
They have pretty much from, because my kids are involved in that program, they pretty much have from school out until, oh, like, eight-thirty.
Yeah, they have clocks.
Yeah, but the meaning that all of it.
Yeah. And that, and is that the elementary as well? I'm trying to think of other.
Yes.
Space.
So they do play, they, they play turf heel in the elementary school.
The high school has in the year.
I don't think they use the, the high school.
No, they don't.
High schools are using, using high school.
I think they use it on Sundays.
So the crux is, is the gym time? And that, I don't have an answer because we don't have an A D and we don't have somebody to tell me where there's slots in the schedule last winter. So the crux would be that as far as practice time.
This is good because this is winter, we can hold off on this and investigate.
And, and the, as you said, the, the athletic director is, is going to be hired and it would, in our honesty, would have been really nice to reach out to the A D and say, hey, what do you, what did you have, what can you do and all that? But that's, that's not neither here nor there. But the gym time is the hardest thing. I, I just think that if, if, if there is, is will behind it, there's, there's an opportunity probably to figure out gym time. And it may not be the, and this is, the other schools have four practices per week typically. I don't know that we would, but we would try to gain as much gym time as we could and find places to get in and, and have kids, you know, being together, working with their coach.
And T C P is owned by the town.
I know that.
The school, so that's also something else that we'd have to look into. The only other thing that I had a question about is why is it only seventh and eighth graders and not six through eights if this middle school's four?
Here's, uh, that would be up to the athletic director. The reason I put seven and eight is because with other sports like track, six, seven, and eight, there's all kinds of kids and everybody can participate and it's easy. With basketball, the, it, it's not really feasible to have twenty kids on a basketball team and get them all into a game. So there's fifteen kids that typically are on a middle school basketball team, that's like the max, typically the number that, that, to get as many kids included. So if the.
But then we're excluding a whole.
Sure. And, and I, if, if people would like to, to have it at six, seven, I'm not opposed to six, seven, eight. The only thing that I see as a former, a, a long time ago as a middle school coach, is sometimes with basketball, it could be like a safety issue with an eighth grader practicing with a sixth grader and trying out. If they wish to try out, they certainly can, but I would be happy to say six, two, that's not important to me.
And would you have tryouts for this?
Absolutely.
It's such a small number.
Yes, yes, so typically, there's usually fifty kids that go, to go to tryouts at other schools and there's lots and lots and lots of interest. It's sort of like a culminating thing to try to be part of your school's team and there's lots of kids that try out, which is kind of why I see like, wow, I can't believe we don't have this because it's a big thing in other towns to have that opportunity for kids to do it and kids get excited all year long to.
I know, I just don't think we have fifty-plus kids playing those grade levels in our rec and travel program at this time.
If we had the four, three grades, it'd be about forty-five kids per. The, the only grade that doesn't have a lot of kids is the current eighth grade.
Girls.
Girls. And those kids, when I spoke, when I, I heard there was two or three that go to another town and would be thrilled to be back into Lunenburg, is what I was told from a seventh grade parent. So that's the one grade that's very small. The, all the other grades have fifteen kids or more. Like, I know as you go down the ladder on the boy side, there's fifteen on each travel team and the younger kids, the ones that I know of personally from my son and daughter, like, oh, so-and-so's coming out for the team, so-and-so's coming out for the team. So there's going to be more than fifteen kids at least in two of those brackets, so.
Okay.
The eighth grade girls is the one anomaly.
Do you know, um, the ones that do have a basketball program, do they include six through eight?
I do not.
Okay.
I think it's, I think a lot of times what happens is you have, like, if there's a really, a really good sixth grade girl, sixth grade boy, they make an exclusion because, wow, she or he may be the best player in the whole school. But typically, I think it's seventh and eighth graders. I can find out.
And then the games are all mixed, grade levels, not separate grade.
Yeah, whoever, whoever makes the team, those, those kids compete.
Right. I just have a question. Is our beginning coaches' salary similar to the number he used? So is that going to work?
I don't know. We would, this, we can't approve today anyway, we really have to look into gym time. Yeah. Yeah, because if we can't get it to a. Yeah, we have a few months for this one to approve because, yeah.
We'd have to take a look at the middle school coaches. It, it looks like these are like the high school coaches.
These are, oh, okay.
In the contract, in the contract.
Yeah.
But we'd have to take a look at the middle school, how we're currently paying middle school mentors and, and make it, make sure it's, it's aligned with that, with that group. So don't let the, the coach salary scare you off. So take, we'll take a look at it.
And this is, or this, is this self-funded or is this?
So at this point, it would be self-funded with the two twenty-five. That, the, that, that's not, doesn't include the, that would be two twenty-five per year to fund it, but the numbers that I arrived through it asking, the forty-eight dollars would not have, you know, based on if this is a yes or no. The idea is that there's a variety of things that have been done to pass for fundraisers. You can have, have three, three tournaments and a variety of other things that may be able to help out, whether by donation or fundraising for, that in my mind would be the best thing to do is to have those things, trying to get, get the uniforms paid for with efforts.
So we just, we have to look into this more with the gym time? Once we have the new athletic director, I think that maybe we, this is something we can talk to him about?
Yes.
Right?
So I can move that we table this until we have.
Wait, yeah.
Is there anything I can do or a person to speak to now that would know? Because the new athletic director may, may come and be like, I don't know about gym time. Is there anybody that I could do work with in the meantime?
Still on, is that you?
Um, no. I mean, I, I can comment on where light, where the junior basketball program practices and their, their schedules and I can work on the possibilities of, you know, presenting that to the towns possibly.
Yeah, because I, I know, I'm pretty sure that the, 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 the schools are booked, the non-high school schools are pretty booked and that's really probably not an option, that's, that's the doubt.
Great. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna wait until we have a new athletic director? And the new athletic director might think middle school sports is very important. We do, we just don't have funding for it.
Yeah.
So, and gym, gym space, we don't have a lot.
Space is certainly.
Especially with the rec program in town.
Uh, so relative to that, is there competition then with the rec program in terms of doing this kind of thing? And the middle school, and are we taking kids away from?
Yeah.
Or?
So you're asking my opinion or?
Well.
No, it would be taking kids away from the rec program.
So I can give you my opinion, that, that's all it is.
Yeah.
So.
Well, you're, you're, you're closer to it than I am.
So my opinion would be that there'd be, there's, there's, assume fifteen boys and girls that do make those teams. Those kids and families would have to make choices. As a parent, I don't want my kids doing three basketball things this winter. I don't think that's, that's not what I would be for. But I, I had a conversation with you about this and this is just my opinion only, is that if you have those fifteen kids, those families could choose to do whatever they want. But if they chose to do school basketball and, and another opportunity for a secondary basketball and they weren't doing rec basketball, that may not be bad for all kids in some ways. Again, my opinion only, because if you have your strongest kids competing against Fitchburg and they're not playing in the rec team, then the kids who are true rec kids get to play some ball. That's, they did. So is there competition? I don't, I don't, I don't know. Families can do what they want, but I, I, I think the, the competitive kids that are making that team will be really good kids and if they choose to do all three, they could, but I don't know that all of them would do three basketball things. Some would, I know that, my kids won't.
Okay, so we're going to get back to you on it.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Do you have your new superintendent, superintendent induction program?
So I'd like to invite Marlene Devoyne to the table. So Marlene is my mentor as part of the new superintendent induction program. Marlene is a retired superintendent herself and I'll let her give you a little bit of an overview of the program and what it entails and when you'll see her around the district.
So thank you for making time for me on the agenda tonight, I really appreciate that. It's a beautiful summer night, so I don't want to keep you too long either. Just a, a quick note of background, as Dr. Burnham mentioned, I'm a retired superintendent of schools, served in that position for eleven years, prior to that, four years as an assistant superintendent in the town of Bedford, so had a long run in one place. Worked in a number of districts before then as a high school principal, a high school assistant principal, an English teacher, et cetera, et cetera. So kind of came up through the ranks, but in different districts. And most recently, when I retired, worked part-time for our commissioner of education as like a special advisor to the commissioner from the field, from the, uh, superintendent. as like a special advisor to the commissioner from the field, from the superintendent perspective. So I'm very excited to be here tonight and I'm very excited to have the opportunity to work with Jordan Superintendent. Um, the new superintendent induction program is designed as a partnership between the Mass Association of School Superintendents and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And the whole focus on this program is to develop the capacity of leaders. Both the superintendents association and our department of education recognize that developing the capacity of the people who lead our school districts is among the most important work that we do in schools. Your superintendent, working with you as the school committee, working through the principals in your district, plays a very key role in the success of who's most important in this district, and that's the children that all of us serve. So I am very excited to be part of this program. I can tell you, it is a collaborative program. It's a learning program. We have 41 brand spanking new superintendents this year in Massachusetts who are a part of this program. And those 41 superintendents are working with 13 coaches across the Commonwealth. Uh, so we touch a lot of districts, a lot of children. And our model is that we're all always learning. As I said to Dr. Burnham, hopefully she'll learn a few things from me, but I'll also be learning from her as she's learning from you and as she's learning about your community. For, this is a three-year program. This first year, we will be focused on Dr. Burnham's entry into the district, helping her develop an entry plan, helping her understand the district. And throughout this whole process this year, she'll be reporting back to you as a committee, reporting back to the community, what has she learned, what are sort of the next steps that she advises to you, um, as you move the district forward with her. So I don't want to take a lot of your time tonight, but I would, would say to you, congratulations to you as a school committee for hiring her and for having the foresight to support her in this important work and to be part of this program. So I thank you for letting me be here and I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
What are some of the activities that she'll get to participate in to, to get herself ready this year?
So the, um, we've already, as she mentioned a few minutes ago, we've already had our first full day together with the 41 superintendents and the 13 coaches. It's a very intense training day that involves some homework or preparation, if you will, before you come into the session, readings and discussions about leadership, talks about how do you enter a district, what are the important things to understand about a district as you're entering? Who are the important stakeholders in a district that you have to make sure you spend some time with and talk to about the district so that you can learn about it on entry? So it's a, it's a theoretical program on one hand, where you understand the theory behind the action, but then it's a very pragmatic program in terms of, here are some of the tools that we can work with you to use to help you do this work. And, you know, we'll be sharing products, you know, people will be developing entry plans in these 41 districts. So part of what we will do, because our model is collaborative, is share across those 41 districts, what are you learning, how are you learning it, and how are you approaching this? There'll be a problem, uh, problems of practice part of the program where somebody may have a real dilemma about, you know, I have this issue before me in my district, I'm not sure if I'm gathering the right information, am I talking to the right people? What else do I need to know? What other questions do I need to ask? Um, so I don't know if that gives you a sense of the program.
And then this first year, there are eight meetings? Is that what I-
There are eight full-day training sessions during year one. And I will be on-site in Lunenburg, a full day probably every month, and then consulting offline with Dr. Burnham in between that. And of course, available for midnight calls or whatever else. You never know in the superintendent's site. The first thing she'll learn, so, so, so you didn't ask you, but, so the hardest thing, the hardest thing to learn, the hardest call, the first year superintendent, it's not the hardest, but it's, it's the one we all talk about, so I'll tell you about it, is the first time you have to call snow.
You said it.
Okay? You have to figure out, who do I talk to? It's amazing who you're talking to at 3:30, 4:00 a.m. in the morning as superintendent, so you can make the right decision about that, right? And it'll never be the right decision for everybody. You know, they'll always be, they'll, I always like to listen to the people who say, Dr. LaCroy, you did a great job. Oh, good. I like to listen to that. But there were always a few people over here, especially the kids, like, what were you thinking? You know, the seniors want you to call off every day because they don't have to make them up. Anyhow, it's another story.
How many mentees will you be working with?
I'll be working with three superintendents.
Okay. And how were you matched?
How were we matched?
Was it a random match or was there-
Um, pardon it.
Live in the area?
Um, no, I don't live in the area, so it's not, it's not geographic. I think they, um, I happen to be mentoring, coaching three female superintendents, but it's unusual this year that we have a lot of new female superintendents. So it's not necessarily gender-based, it's not geographic. Um, I think it's best based on the folks who run the program figuring out, we think this will be a good match. They get to know the new superintendent a little bit, they know the coaches very well. So they make their best guess as to what will be the best match. Hopefully get a-
Pull a name out of a hat or somebody who's actually making a conscious decision saying, I think this might be a good match.
Yeah, it's not quite that random. You know, in some cases, you might have a regional school superintendent, so if you had a coach who had regional school district experience, that might be helpful. An urban situation, you may look to match, but it isn't necessarily based on you have to have been in that position to help coach that position. It's really more about understanding leadership, what are the critical elements of leadership, and understanding the core of our business, which is teaching and learning. So it's more about that than the other factors, although they factor in probably a little bit.
I think it's her mind, boots. Yeah. She got the great. Sounds like a fabulous program. Very exciting for you.
And honestly, I was thrilled when I learned that Marlene was going to be my mentor because I know amongst other superintendents, she's highly regarded for her experience. So I feel very fortunate.
We think it's a good match sometimes, you know.
Where were you a superintendent?
I was superintendent in the town of Bedford. So I started my career, I won't go through the whole career, but I started my career in Randolph and ended, spent 13 years as a teacher there, then some stops along the way before I became an assistant and a superintendent of schools. But spent 15 years there and love that town to this day and felt very privileged to serve as their superintendent.
Thanks for coming.
All righty, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, Burnham, please.
Yes. Sorry.
Yeah. Trying to be cheerful with us. Yeah. Um, first of all, Dr. Burnham, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm really looking forward to working with you. As I mentioned, my email had a great working relationship with Loxie and hopefully be on the same after things settle down with you, I'm sure. Um, school committee, thank you so much for having us here and hearing us out on this important issue. We really appreciate it. Um, my name's Chuck Cordomage. For those of you who don't know me, I live at 41 Cortland Circle here in Lunenburg. And I'm also the president of the Lunenburg Bengals. Um, I do a lot of volunteering in town. I'm actually also the vice president for the Youth Lacrosse Association as well. Um, and I coach for the high school varsity team. So I actually have a real job too, so, you know, it kind of, sometimes my wife is actually, she's like, what have you done today for your real job? I'm like, I don't know yet. But, um, I have a passion for the town and I have a passion for the youth in the town, the kids. And so, um, you know, that's what drives me to volunteer as I do. So, um, and that's really where this, this presentation comes from, from us. You guys all have the presentation ready? Do you have? Yes, okay. Well, great. And, um, you know, I promise we're not going to bore you with all these powerpoint. We really hope this is an open conversation, but I thought it was important for some of you folks to, to, if you didn't already know, just be reminded about the history of the Bengals. Um, we've been a part of Lunenburg, Lunenburg's youth athletics for 47 years. So, um, you know, I should be still on board as president during our 50th anniversary, which I'm really excited about. I think that's going to be a really neat thing. Um, we're a nonprofit organization, we're 501(c)(3), and we're part of Central Mass, what they call AYF, American Youth Football. Uh, for those of you who don't know, you're, you're probably used to hearing Pop Warner, right? AYF is a little different and it sort of came about as a, a different approach to the game. Pop Warner still exists and it's football still, but with Pop Warner, there's a lot of things like weigh-ins and things like that. With AYF, it's really more grade-based, um, you know, football. There's, there's not so much of a barrier to entry, if you will. Um, there's 32 organizations within Central Mass AYF, and that's our governing body that we report up to. Um, as you can imagine, over 47 years, we've, we've got thousands of Lunenburg children come through for football and cheer. And a lot of life lessons, we believe, have been taught through those programs. You know, it's, it's really great to me when I go around town and if I have a Bengals shirt on or something and, you know, somebody says, hey, you know, man, I played for the Bengals or my kid played for the Bengals. It's really fun to hear, or I coached for the Bengals. So, um, you know, that, that really gets me energized about my work there. Um, so as, as I mentioned, we're run by an organization of volunteers, the board. Uh, with me today, I have the treasurer, Marissa Erickson Heffernan, whose dad actually just stepped down from the finance committee, right? Um, and Joe Anderson here recently took over as the fundraising coordinator. The rest of our members would love to be here. However, they're at a meeting, uh, in Marlborough right now for coaches and books. So it's a, it's just a busy day all around for us. Um, another member of our board is here as well, Kristen Burns, whom, right now, we actually, I had mentioned, have a fundraiser going on as well for her family. So we're, we're very busy people, but, um, we're also happy to hear the news that Pete's, Pete's getting quite a bit better. We're very, very happy about daddy's home. So she, I couldn't appreciate it more than you're here right now, given how you have going on. So thank you. Um, you know, with our program, uh, it's not really just football, as you can imagine, and cheer. We have, uh, you know, we're pretty passionate about what we're teaching the kids. Obviously, it's more than just sports, right? So our big thing is respect, doing the right thing, um, you know, being the bigger person, of course, and how to treat others. But in addition to that, what I always like to tell the coaches that we need to keep in mind is, um, you know, we want to learn, get the kids to learn how to challenge themselves, right? Learn how to compete and learn how to build confidence ultimately. A lot of kids this year I know are new, uh, they're coming in, at least on the fifth grade team. And, you know, I've already heard from a couple of them because they were hockey kids or whatever, they're like, oh, I've only ever played hockey, I don't know what I'm going to do, you know? And I'm like, no, we're going to take care of you, it's going to be okay. So we look forward to building that confidence in them as well, and we think that carries over into other things in life. Ultimately, we want to stay here in our town and play home games, obviously, right? Um, and, and we really need your help in doing so, and that's what brings us here today. Um, Joe has actually been a part of the organization, um, in a previous life. Uh, we brought him back. He was on a previous board with the Bengals and, um, and he's just been fantastic as it relates to fundraising. So I thought he'd be a good person to talk a little bit about the history of the turf and how it, how it came to be and how we're here.
Thank you. So, uh, the turf originally was funded a lot by the Bengals. A lot of Bengal members helped and donated and fundraised to get the turf in town. Um, originally, when I first joined, which was five years ago, the day I closed my house actually, is when I started coaching with Phil. Um, it was basically the Bengals, we had a big Bengals scoreboard and it was kind of like the Bengals field. Uh, at one point, there was a big Bengals B and, uh, and things like that on the field. Um, so, so the turf itself, I lost my slide. Oh, you're up there. So the turf itself was originally a, a big time Bengals experience. Also, what you can see off to the side of the, of the turf is the sports shed, which again was helped, funded and built by Bengal members in past and present. Um, about a third of that, we use right now for equipment. The other two-thirds is, is storage for, uh, for high school and electric and things like that. Um, and to be honest, I don't know if the turf would have happened originally if it wasn't for the Bengals fundraising and, and doing things like that. Over the years, I think it might have been turned over to town and, and track and field and things like that. Obviously, it just got replaced. Um, originally, if I can go to the next slide here, to our current efforts, um, right now, we're doing a lot for our, for our community. Chuck has started a give-back program. One of the main things, just to play off of what you were talking about earlier, Chuck, is, is this community effort and this community pride that we teach all the kids. So ever since I got here, it was always do the right thing even when no one's looking. Um, take pride in your community. Be proud for that name you wear on your shirt. It's Lunenburg, you represent them everywhere you go. So to, to stay in Lunenburg is a, is a big goal and a big thing for us because you take, I feel like if you take the children out of the town, it kind of dissipates the entire community pride aspect out of it. Now, I don't want to bore you with all these words that I wrote down here. But that's, that's really the main goal, is, is to keep us here. And I really believe that, that you want that. I know we want that. I know all the residents that are past and present Bengal members want that. It's, we have a big saying, it's on all of our stuff, once a Bengal, always a Bengal. People that started or still in the community back from 1970, um, one of my neighbor's father was one of the founding members. Every time I have my Bengal hat on, she stops and talks to me. I mean, it's a big thing in town. And, and to take that out of town for, for some money is, I think we can all agree, is kind of, it's something we don't want. Yeah, nothing, nobody wants that.
Um, yeah, just to piggyback on that, you know, some of the things that are important to me are, you know, that give-back program Joe mentioned. Um, so this year, our first give-back program was to help mulch and landscape the Veterans Memorial on Memorial Drive. Uh, we want, we hope that that continues to grow. Um, working with, so as I mentioned, I'm a, you know, a coach on the high school team. And I think that puts me in a unique position to be in part of both organizations and tie them together. You know, having been a part of that varsity coaching staff and watching Bengals kids come up from eighth grade, you know, I get to see the gaps that exist there, right? And there are. You know, it's not just football either. It's like, oh my gosh, I'm going to high school now, right? And so, and then I also hear from the parents about things like, wow, I went from all this great communication with the Bengals to now they're at high school and, and I'm not really seeing much of anything, you know? And that's part of going to high school, it's a little different, right, of communication. So, but what I've, what I've really strived to do with the Bengals is make them a true feeder system for the high school and to be able to use these great facilities that we have. And what I mean by a true feeder system is working with those eighth and ninth graders to make them feel more comfortable, um, with, with the transition into high school, not just from a football aspect, but having the current freshmen or sophomores even talking to them about, you know, what, what it's like to transition. And we have come down to the banquet and talked to them, to the eighth graders now. And so we're doing a lot of work with that. It's very hard, but it's a lot. Um, so, you know, even things, you know, football related, making sure that our playbooks line up. So working with Coach Boone at the high school, um, you know, we put together a program that, um, it starts down with the, the second and third grade kids and saying, our goal is for you to, you know, learn these three things by, by the end of the season, right? I mean, they're seven and eight years old, so it's little, small things like that. And then by the time they get up into eighth grade, you know, we're hoping that they know pretty much the entire playbook and we're on the same page. Um, so, you know, just continuing our, our great tradition of giving back and teaching our youth to take pride in town. You know, I always say, I love Lunenburg and I love football. And so, you know, that, that's another driving force for me is I want to see it come back and be a real source of pride in town. We have a rich history of football in general in town. Um, it's been, you know, really good over the years, especially eighties, nineties. Um, it was really good. And, um, it was just an important thing for a lot of people and I'd like to see it continue to be that in town. Getting out of brass tacks, our, our current finances. So currently, our annual revenue, um, is approximately $53,000. We're still in the process of doing our taxes, so I'm going to say approximately. Getting out of brass tacks, our current finances. So, currently, our annual revenue is approximately fifty-three thousand dollars. We're still in the process of doing our taxes, so I'm gonna say approximately. Now, I guess, you know, the first thing you would say is, "Geez, Chuck, you have fifty-three thousand dollars. You know, it shouldn't be that big of an issue." However, our annual costs are approximately forty-eight thousand dollars without including field fees. And so, those forty-eight thousand dollars, things that are included in that are, you know, insurance is a big one, helmets, pads, practice jerseys, game jerseys, cheering outfits, concession overheads, EMTs, referees, football socks, et cetera, right? We outfit the kids completely in the best possible gear they can have, right?
It's safest.
It is the safest and best, absolutely. And that's, you know, fun and safety is obviously our top goals, right? So, we make sure that they have the best equipment possible. Last year, we made an investment of, I think it was like seven thousand dollars or something around there for brand-new helmets, like the same, most of them are the same helmets the Patriots wear. I mean, they're really good, and that's important, and we don't think you should skip there. Currently, you know, just to give some comp, I guess if you will, to what other towns are paying for their turf fees, you know, one of the great things is being president is I get to meet a lot of great people, other presidents, in fact, over in Air, in Pittsburgh, and Clinton in Oakmont, and they're just all great people, and I get to really, you know, prepare notes with them on things. So, in sort of doing my informal survey, I found they're only paying for game days and nobody else is paying for practice fields. And on top of that, they're really only paying between zero and three thousand dollars total for the year. Our field usage really is, for games, is four days, you know, a year, at about six hours a pop, because we put everybody in on one day, right? From flag all the way up through eighth grade. So, it's about six hours, four times a year. For seventy-five hundred dollars we paid last year, I came in and, you know, in working with Loxie, I decided, because there was some back and forth, as we know, about what was the commitment over that. And it was just virtually impossible to find what the facts were over how that was viewed and what the commitment was. So, as a sign of good faith and to work with Loxie going forward and ultimately yourself as well, of course, I said, "Words, I'm gonna pay the seventy-five hundred, you know, this year and the extra thousand dollars, you know, as well." And but with the idea that we really need to work on this, like, it's just not sustainable for us going forward. I mean, the numbers I just gave you, fifty-three thousand revenue, but forty-eight thousand expenses without field fees already puts us in the negative. Historically, just so you do know, we've paid about three thousand seven hundred fifty over two seasons combined.
That's max.
A big, and that's the max. A big thing is concessions used to be a really big, large aspect of our revenue. It's huge. In fact, it offsets the cost of game day operation, which is referees, EMTs, that kind of thing. We don't really make money, per se, on the concessions, but it offsets that cost, if that makes sense. It's about, you know, roughly a thousand dollars there. So, the issue there is, as I'm sure we're all aware, you know, concessions is now being regulated in a new way, and I know we're all talking through that right now, and we're perfectly understanding of how that's going. But the bottom line is, it will affect us negatively, you know, because we just don't know what we're gonna be able to sell there at this point. And, you know, everything from burgers to hot dogs and all the other great stuff that you see at a concession stand, if we're regulated down to just like chips and soda or something like that, it's really just not gonna be feasible for us, especially with the costs, you know? I like to tell people, you know, I used to run a concessions business, and I'm very familiar with how all that stuff goes and the very thin margins we have. And so, I can tell you, if we went down to chips and soda, it would almost not be worth opening, you know? So, that's another hit we may take, but we don't know for sure. I know we're working through that. So, you know, what it comes down to is the eighty-five hundred dollars would be, you know, virtually impossible for us to pay, and we're hopeful, as a conclusion here, that we can work through this in some way. You know, we certainly don't believe that anybody here is intending to put us out of business, if you will, and bankrupt us. We understand, you know, what a big part of town the Bengals have been over the years. And we'd like, we completely think that, I'm sure rather, that, you know, nobody wants to see us leave town, right? I've talked to a couple of other locations that would be willing to pay, excuse me, willing to charge us two hundred fifty dollars a day for game day. So, what that would come out to is four games, obviously a thousand dollars for the season. Those are two local fields here. Again, not ideal, but, you know, money is money, right? Fiscal sense, you go from eighty-five hundred to a thousand, that's a lot more equipment we could buy or other things we could do with that. So, you know, a good line here that I thought was really important is, you know, we've been able to figure this out for forty-seven years and things have gone, you know, fairly smooth. You know, and I'm hoping we're able to continue to do that going forward. You know, in talking with it last time, you know, I had a meeting with Mr. Roca here as well as Loxie, and Heather Lemieux was there, and also Jamie Tol, correct? And, you know, we went through some numbers, talked about things, and ultimately, Loxie, you know, gave me a call and said, you know, "We just feel that you should pay the eighty-five hundred dollars." And I said, you know, "That's a tough bill to swallow. You know, I don't know what we're gonna do," was my said, you know? I had ultimately said, where, you know, could we pay the, could we just pay what we have paid, right? I mean, that seems about what we can afford at this point, right? And she had said it was not an option. And so, so I brought that back to the board, and, you know, everything has to be brought around by the board, obviously, as you guys know. And in speaking with the board, I said, "Well, you know, here's where we're at, right? We have, I'm told we have to pay this, or we're expected to pay this, I should say. It comes down to how important do you think it is that we stay in town, right? Does it hurt the program to leave town, which I truly believe it does, and everybody else does, right? I mean, at that point, if you're playing home games at St. Bernard's Air, are you even the Lunenburg Bengals anymore? I mean, you could be the Lunenburg Rovers or something, right? Because you're going to end up field. But, you know, we all decided it is so important for us to stay here for just a number of reasons. You know, for all the stuff that I just mentioned, sense of pride about the town, certainly recruiting and showing that we do have support of the town, and football is very much alive and well, alive and well here. We want to see that these young kids come back and keep coming up through the system and are making use of these fields that we all have here, right? And the weight room and everything. So, we really feel it's important, and that's why we're here today, is to try to talk through this. You know, and at the end of the day, too, it's sort of my thought that, you know, as we work together, you know, something's better than nothing, right? If we could work together and find a dollar figure that works for everybody, right? You know, if we leave, the town wouldn't get any eighty-five, it wouldn't get money at all for that. But if we stay and figure out a number, at least we could get something, we could work through this together. So, in closing, thanks for letting me ramble a little bit here. As you can see, I'm pretty passionate about it, but no matter what happens, you know, we really do appreciate everybody hearing us out today. You know, certainly, you know, this, you know, this has been great in itself. So, we're really appreciative of that. We're just all trying to do what's right and agree to keep the Bengals here in town. That's truly what our goal is, and we just like to try to find a way to work with you guys. And that's really it. If anybody else has any comments from Marissa or Joe.
I think you covered it.
And I just wanted to thank you.
Okay. When Loxie talked to you about it, did she tell you that the seven thousand five hundred dollars to pay the bond, right? So, that means that we have to pay the difference from the school. The school budget will have to find the difference?
Right.
And she told you that, right?
She did, because I asked.
Because it's not that we want to charge you that much money.
Yes, right.
We just will have to come up with either the seven thousand five hundred dollars that you don't pay or the difference that you don't pay.
Right, and I had mentioned, because I had talked, what the conversation was, whether it was almost exactly that.
Yeah.
Is I had said, well, what, I said, "Here, you know, Loxie, here's what I'm gonna be asked, you know, by the board, so I just need to, I'm just gonna get it all to the table." And my question was exactly that, you know, "I understand what the seventy-five hundred dollars is for."
Right.
I said, "But what happens? What would happen, you know, if we were to leave and go place someplace else, then the board, or, excuse me, the town would have to find the seventy-five hundred dollars?"
No, the school would.
Oh, the school, excuse me. The school would have to find seven thousand five hundred dollars. And that was our answer. She said, "We just have to find another way to find it."
Yeah, we have to.
To raise it.
Can I make a point to that? This is somebody who has a little bit of experience. My name's Phil Arpaolo, by the way, Seventy-two Rockshow Road, Lunenburg. The previous board never would have considered agreeing to pay seventy-five hundred dollars annually. And I'll drive it back to one point and one point only. The Bengals' membership or renewal and the enrollment that you see every year varies. So, they wouldn't, they would have been very apprehensive to lay it on the line and say, "Look, we can absolutely raise seventy-five hundred dollars annually on a recurrent basis." That's not a sustainable model for them because on any given year, your enrollment could be down, and as a result, the revenues associated with the program would be down. So, as a citizen of Lunenburg and a taxpayer, my recommendation would be to move to a system where you have an enrollment-based fee so that you can associate that back to registration. I would include that, or move to an hourly structure, which I think is probably what the current policy says.
Yes, the current.
Right? So, and I'm sorry to kind of insert myself into the meeting here, but I think that logically thinking through the problem, everybody understands that there's a financial model, there's a consequence, right? There's a bond that the school is responsible to satisfy. I think from a logical perspective, it makes sense to make it either per-annual user fee by participant or to allocate the scheduled hours and then divide that through, you know, whomever utilizes the fields for that time. That would be my recommendation to move forward because as somebody who spent ten years in the program, I'm very passionate about it, and there's a lot of positives that come from the Bengals being in Lunenburg. It builds community, it builds sense of pride at a very early age. You know, these coaches spend a lot of time with these kids, you know, second, third grade, fourth grade, right up through until they hand them off to the high school. And they compete, they compete on a very high level. You know, the team that I had played in the Super Bowl and had a very positive experience. So, I think it's kind of, you gotta look at the big picture, right? We understand that there's a financial consequence, but also understand that the Bengals are not, they don't have an open, they don't have an open checkbook, and that checkbook is largely predicated upon how many children enroll in the program annually. So, to set a flat fee every year, it's just not really something that they could budget for. And that's my two cents. Thank you for your time.
Phil, just a quick mention of what can happen about a successful team. Phil's team, as you mentioned, went to the Super Bowl, and he was one of the better coaches we got to come through the program. His team has now come up to the high school, and it's really boosted our numbers at the high school.
Twenty, correct?
Yeah, we have one of the largest varsity teams and programs that we've had in the last five, six years. And that's, I think we're gonna have that coming up the next three years, maybe at least. And that, to me, is what happens when you are able to keep the program in town and able to have good people in town, working with the program, keeping you here, sense of pride, all that stuff that I mentioned. But just, yeah, it's really been a great example, his team coming up and, you know, what can be, you know?
And that's something with the cheer also.
Yes.
The cheer program now, the cheer is starting in the high school level, they're starting...
Oh, because the numbers were really low before that?
Yeah.
Yeah, our numbers in cheer are record, they're record high now. They're so high. We, they're, they are amazing, and that's a testament to not only the cheer director, Kim Alvaro, but the success that the program has had. You know, competing in all these competitions that they've gone to and, you know, placing first, second, or third, like, they've never done that before in these state competitions and nationals. And so, the program itself has just been really successful. And I told Kim, I said, "Look, let's make this the best cheer program in all of Central Mass. Let's do it. We have these numbers, they're great, we have all this great participation. You know, we talk about it all the time, you know, I have a daughter who's gonna be going to kindergarten, you know, I want her to be fierce, I want her to, you know, be have lots of confidence and that stuff, and I think cheer is awesome for that." So, you know, that's, it's another aspect of our program that's really growing strong right now. So, you know, we're proud of that.
So, relative to the bond, you mentioned that the fee is to pay a bond. Is that specific to Bengals athletics, or is that something that's...
It was something that...
The school has to pay?
The old athletics director and superintendent came up with several years ago to get the bond. They had these figures. Our part of it is twenty-five thousand dollars is the school's portion of the bond. LISA pays fifteen thousand dollars to the bond, and then the Bengals was seven thousand five hundred. And then the Verizon cell tower.
Okay.
Mr. Rogers is familiar with this, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So, it was a seven hundred and seventy thousand dollar project to renovate and track. It was bonded over twelve years, or in the second year of the bond.
I had a question about field usage. You said four home games. It always seemed like more than that to me.
No, yeah.
Just four days that they do the games. What about the practices? Do they also...
We practice down at Turkey Hill.
Okay.
Last year, we were able to use, because of the increase in the fee, the former ID said, "You know, I feel like you're paying this money this year. I'm gonna also make it so you can practice on the turf." So, we were able to use that as well. While that would be great...
That was the first year we did that.
That was the first year we got it. Yeah, but while that'd be great, Turkey Hill is sufficient, especially if it comes to money thing, but certainly, you know, it was definitely nice to be up there and spread out a little bit, you know, versus packing people down in Turkey Hill and having to alter schedules around, you know, within that.
The Turkey Hill...
Sorry, when I say Turkey Hill...
Yeah, that's much, that's much smaller than the space they used to have.
When I say Turkey Hill, I mean like the playground.
Yeah, right.
Correct. The practice field we used to have before new schools built was much larger.
Yeah, right. It was here.
Yeah.
It was.
That's right. Well, it's right here, Ron.
That's right, that's correct.
I have a question. You mentioned that the numbers, they came up with the numbers a few years ago.
Yeah.
But this was the first time that we paid that amount?
Because there was no fields. We had no field usage there. Even our, the high school team was at Leman's Center.
That's right.
Okay, but that was, they came up with the numbers prior to, when they took the bond?
It was twenty sixteen.
Yeah, twenty sixteen.
Because we, yeah, we paid the thirty-seven hundred.
It was voted at town meeting for the bond?
Right. So, is that, so the letter referencing the seventy-five thousand, or seventy-five hundred annually was at...
Was at town meeting, yeah.
Was in twenty sixteen.
Mr. McCallum, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Because it was an undated letter, so I didn't know.
But that, you know, the only reason I know from reference, because it says Chairman Toll.
Yep.
And that's, he was, you know, his chairmanship is only a certain amount of time.
Right. I think this is for...
Could be, yeah.
And so, just with regard to that letter, there's very much to talk about it. It's been a while. You know, we viewed that at the time, or I can say the previous administration, because I wasn't here when that, I wasn't part of the organization when that letter was written or agreed upon between the two. I can say it was written from our perspective, from what I've been told, as a pledge letter, basically, to help secure financing for the bond. You know, the, obviously, whoever you financed through had to see this is, you know, this is some funding. But it was also, you know, we were always under the impression that it was a one-time thing.
You know, it says annually.
It does say that, and the way that it's written is, we currently, and I don't mean in its words or against, this is how you view it.
I've shared it myself.
Yeah, it said, "Our current annual," we understand our current annual estimate to be, you know?
Right. My name's on the letter, and that's exactly how we...
Oh, your name is on it.
And so, there wasn't...
I know that Mr. Arpaolo's wife's name is on it.
Yes, correct.
I was the vice president at the time.
Oh.
And so, we look at it as it was a pledge letter, there's obviously no real signatures on there, there's no date, there's no terms, things like that, that we would obviously have, we would, you know, need to do something with a commitment, we'd have to see those things on there, right? So, but that's how, and definitely something to drive this conversation, but it's how we view, just so you know, the history of how we view the letter from our perspective. So...
And I think there was an understanding that they'd be moving to an hourly structure.
Yes, that was also said.
Yes, correct. That's what I was saying.
There was an understanding that they would be moving to an hourly-based fee structure.
And that was to, because we didn't pay for the previous year also.
Yeah, about three years.
So, they came, our understanding was they came to that number because we hadn't paid previously, because Parks and Rec didn't have a bill.
Oh, because it was Parks and Rec at the time?
That's right.
Yeah, so they never...
So, that's why it was addressed to chairman toll?
Mostly, yeah.
And the bond was through the town, it's not a school bond.
Right.
It's the town of Lunenburg that holds the bond.
Mm-hmm.
Which is why we have to pay towards the bond as well.
Sure.
But I think that was our understanding of where that amount came from, because we hadn't paid the previous year, and so it was the combined.
Right.
Okay.
The $75.
And I don't, I was in chair at the time.
Right.
I wasn't involved in any of that.
We have a lot in common though.
Yeah. I have much, as much information probably as...
We should talk, we should talk, prepare on this stuff.
I, just what I know from other people.
Right.
Because I was never involved in any of the negotiations for the numbers.
I hear you.
I was at the town meeting.
Yeah.
But that's, I don't know.
But it didn't cash out?
No, there was no cash out of any numbers for commitment by individual group.
Yeah, I rewatched the school committee, the school committee one where it was mentioned, and it was just giving the impression that everything was all set.
Yeah.
Right? Because I'm like, I was there, I rewatched it, Mr. McCollum. It's about the two hour and 15 minute mark.
Two hours and 15 minutes?
It was like, you were long.
That's a long...
Oh, one hour, one hour and 15, the whole thing was two, one fifteen, and it ended with two hours.
For those Parks and Rec ones, that they did the same conversation, and that was both two hours as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's Mr. McCollum, same stuff.
Yeah.
In that one.
Okay. So, that's where we are. So, this...
Is this the, I, is this the right venue?
No.
It's a town bond, is that...
The policy says that the school administration administrators create the fee, and the school committee has to approve it. So, yes, this is the right school administration.
Right, for the field, for the field.
For the turf, yeah, so it's policy 1,000, section 1202. So, it is the school administration that has to set the fee, and then the school committee has to approve the fee.
Right. Sir?
Good evening, my name is Peter Beardmore. I'm a Bangles parent and a product of the Lunenburg school system and almost lifelong resident. I was at the town meeting, not in 2016, but I was at the one in 2002 or 2003, when the town actually coughed up the money to complete the funding, I believe Mr. Rogers was the selectman at the time, to complete the original field before the upgrade was made. And I'd like to point out the fact that, at the time, that field was built for the use of the Bangles, of the soccer team, and track and field. That was it. There was no field hockey, there was no high school football, there was no anything other than those three activities. Because it was felt that those particular sports had the capacity to do the fundraising and the need for that space, because all of the other space was being used up by everybody else in town. Now, there's obviously a lot of water that's gone onto the bridge since then, but over that period of time, there was a Thanksgiving Day game where the high school field washed out, and then the high school team played down on the lower field, and then all of a sudden, they never went back. And we built three new fields, and the high school football team is still on the turf. And there's now two or three additional sports that have taken the use of that field and ground, you know, really ground down that field to the point that it had to be replaced a few years ago. It was used probably two to three times what it was originally intended over a period of time. So, when this issue started bubbling up over the course of the last several months, I started looking for information on town websites and looking back through some minutes and that sort of thing. I gotta tell you, there's no information that I could find on your website for the school department. The policies, in my mind, are not clear, and there isn't a clear rationalization of who uses what field space and the costs associated with that. So, in my mind, I would really appreciate an accounting for that. You know, why isn't the high school using the grass field up here? I would, I'm sure that those discussions have happened, and there's a good reason for it, but there's no upfront rationalization for who's using what space on these precious fields that we have, and what the cost of that use is over time. And my interpretation right now, as a parent of a Bangles, and, you know, kids that play several other sports in town, is that the Bangles are paying a disproportionate amount for what they're using. And then when you add to that the fact that the original construction of that field was overwhelmingly funded by the Bangles organization, and the parents, and the parents and the leadership of the board at that time, I think you're giving the organization an extremely raw deal, regardless of the miscommunication that might have occurred over the course of the last two to three years. And I gotta warn you, that if this isn't handled properly, there's going to be a big political backlash in this town.
The reason that the turf is used for the high school sports is that it's school property, and that's why the high school sports are over there. It's school property now.
Well, let me, let me correct you, Mrs. Soroka. This is town property.
Correct.
It's owned by all of us, right? The Lunenburg Bangles, I think about 90% of the kids on the Lunenburg Bangles, maybe more, are Lunenburg kids, right? They're our kids. Now, I understand that there's a differentiation between a school-sponsored activity and a club-sponsored activity and an organization, but you just approved a sports program tonight and said, "Yeah, we'll get some free field space over here," and nobody batted an eye at it.
Didn't say there was free, they said they would use it.
Yeah, probably, probably some open space over here. Nobody batted an eye at the usage of that space, or the wear and tear on that space, or the costs associated with it. So, you know, this is, I understand there's a difference between town space and school space and park space, but at the end of the day, we're all writing the check as taxpayers, right? It's coming from everybody sitting in this room. And I think that there ought to be an accounting for us as taxpayers for who's using what, when, and what the associated cost is for that space.
I know, there's a lot of history, it used to be the park, and they never maintained it, and that's why it got turned back over to the schools.
There's even more history.
Right, I know, there's a lot of history that, it's before I was even here in Lunenburg. Because I was not here in Lunenburg in 2002. I'm not sure how many people were here, and you weren't?
A lot was there.
Yeah, but, yeah, but I was not here in 2002, I was not, I cannot say I was at that town meeting. I have no rec, no information about that at all. Only what I know from when I've gone to town meetings. But...
Have you guys looked at what would be feasible? The $7,500 is, you're saying is out of the realm of possibility, and so I'm hearing that.
So, yeah, I had offered, I had offered what we had paid in the past, and you know, and even, you know, $3,000, we figured, just based on, we did some quick math on the amount of time that we used the field, so let's say six hours, you know, times, what was the number you would use?
Well, it's actually, when you and I talked, I was using this number, and it would be the 25.
It'd be the 25 as a nonprofit.
So, that only comes up to $600, because it's 24.
Yeah.
24 hours.
And we're committed to helping with the field as somebody that uses it, so, but, you know, sort of complimenting what everybody else, or echoing what everybody else in here said, you know, it's like, we, we need to find something that works for us in that regard, and we have, we said, you know, we believe that our number is likely around $3,000 that we think we can do.
Contingent upon enrollment, correct?
Yes, of course, we should talk about...
Hypothetically, you have, you know, throw around a number, 200 participants this year, you're probably not even close to that.
No, we're not this year.
Just as a hypothetical, if you're 200 this year, and you're committing 3,000, and you're 100 next year, does that mean you pay 1,500?
Right.
Right. That's, that's part of the conversation.
Right. And one other thing I did forget to mention regarding, so, we'd paid $7,500, and then paid another thousand for what was deemed kind of miscellaneous, right? Like the electricity that was used, which we don't use any, but we ended up, and then it was, just kind of miscellaneous is what I was told that it was, this is what the thousand dollars was for. Loxie had told me that it was, she worked with, I believe, Mr. Rogers here, and found that our electricity usage was only $238, I think it was, for the year, 283 or 238?
I don't have the...
It was that?
It was either 238 or 283, that's the number. But I didn't really get a clear answer from anybody on why we were still charged $1,000, like, what did that go towards? And a lot of, like I said, a lot of that had to do with good faith, you know, and working with folks, because I hadn't been here and been privy to those conversations. So, it was, okay, you know, we committed this, we had this budgeted for this year, so we're going to pay it now, but we, like I had said, you know, to start off the presentation, we really need to figure out a way to work through this going forward, and that was sort of my understanding. And, you know, as you can see, there's a lot of passion, you know, for the program and the town. I do like the idea of participation-based. Obviously, I think that's fair, but, you know, that's something we could talk through, but at the end of the day, the number one thing is, you know, if you guys are open to, you know, having that conversation about how do we talk through this, and how do we work together to find a number that works for them.
Can you repeat that number, you did the calculation based on the 25?
So, if it's six hours a day, four days, 24 hours, times $25 an hour, that's how I came up with that.
What was the final?
600? 600, okay, thank you. But you're under the nonprofit organization?
Mm-hmm.
But nonprofit Lunenburg youth requires a seasonal agreement. That's why they're all zeros?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's the asterisk that is under there in that?
Seasonal agreement.
Yeah.
And so, I received that from, from Loxie already, and obviously, you know, we looked at it, and obviously, you have the $7,500 number plus the 1,000, so we haven't, you know, we obviously don't have the intention of signing it, right? So, we need to, you know, we need to walk through that agreement as well, and likely alter that to meet, you know, what makes sense for both parties.
Can you just tell me how many families, Lunenburg families it is?
Total in the organization?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're roughly 150 right now.
All right.
Might be just under that, but yeah, it's probably going to put around that.
And what do the families pay per athlete?
That varies. So, flag football is $75. Tackle football is $175. And we do offer an early signup, early registration discount for that, $25. Cheer is, what does that start off at?
More cheer?
75.
I think it's 75 and then 150.
75 and 150, that's right, yes. No, it is, you're right.
75 would be for the D8s, what the little...
D8.
Oh, the younger girl?
Yep.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
D10 through D14 though is $1, $150.
Okay. Our total to date is 116 for football and cheer.
Is it?
Families?
Yeah.
Okay. Or participants?
Participants, sorry.
For, oh, okay, 150 families. So, it'd be less.
We still do...
Yeah, some people have, some people have several children.
116 participants, so...
116.
116.
Sorry, yeah, I was clearly off there. We, we do offer a multi-family, or multi-kid discount per family.
Sure.
Everything we can.
Is that volunteer cheer?
It is, that's 116.
Mm-hmm.
Again, to your point, you mentioned something about the concessions being very good.
Right.
The athletic advisory committee met yesterday. I was going to make that just points later, and that update, but this seems appropriate.
Yes, yes, please do.
You were represented, I think.
You were at our, and you were at our...
Yeah, Shayna and...
Very good, yeah.
I was at yet another meeting? So, yeah.
Another meeting.
Yeah.
So, what we've heard back is that things like pizza would be okay, and prepared foods, bags, chips, so, stuff like that.
Pizza's not a big sell for us, unfortunately.
Right, so...
That's what he asked when I showed us?
Yeah, that's what we've heard back. And that there will be permits required. You don't have to be pulled by event, and so I don't know yet by event if that means per instance or per season. So, we're looking into what that means, and whether or not there's a permit fee involved.
There, of course, there's a permit fee involved, that's why they need to...
Well, but for nonprofits, I don't know if there's a permit fee for nonprofits.
You'd have to ask for a waiver.
We're looking at it. The concession stand as it stands now will not be able to support what we've been doing.
No.
And so, another tack that we're taking within the advisory council is looking at what would it take to get the building to code to be able to do that.
Sure, yeah, I've heard those discussions, yeah. Things like a 106, for example.
Yeah, so that's one half of talk going on at the moment as well. And then, of course, figuring how that's going to get paid for, whether the boosters are going to be involved, how they plan to deal with it.
Sure.
But certainly, I think, based on that latest information, that your concession stand is not going to cover your EMT and field costs, or your normal game day costs.
Yeah, it's going to be another, well, like I said, it's $1,000 roughly to, for game day, you know, expenses, operations. So, we would take a hit there, for sure.
And so, you have four games, so that would be worth that much per game?
Yeah, I think... Per, per, per day.
Per day. And I thought that you told us in our meeting that it covered a lot of your expenses for the game day.
Yeah.
Yep, it does, so it directly goes to...
EMTs, refs, every leg, all that stuff.
Yeah. And then, like I said, it approximates them at about $1,000, but that, it's literally a wash usually between the concession stand and that, so, yeah.
So, you're keeping in account your already taped budget, that is going to be a hit?
I always say it's, you know, I talked earlier about only concessions business, where I, I'm sure you remember Wolf Dogs at Home Depot, it was there, the hot dog tent, so I used to own that for a few years. And it was funny, because I went through the permit process quite a bit, right, went through the Board of Health, and I can tell you, I had far less in there in that shed, operating-wise, than we have out there. So, it was kind of shocking to me that we needed more, but then again, that was, you know, like, six, eight years ago or something like that, so, things have changed.
Food trucks are a big thing now.
They are a big thing, yeah, yeah.
Maybe an option, an option. A Bengals jet truck.
I know, we thought about that, you know, do we do a food truck, or what do we do, you know? So, there's, but either way, you see my point, is that it's going to...
And again, it's not just Bangles, it's going to be...
Oh, it's everybody.
Musicators, it's...
Oh, it's everybody. Yeah, there's been a lot, yeah. We've been talking with a lot of them, Dean French.
Dean French?
Yeah, yeah. Spoke with him, you know, he's pretty passionate about it as well, he was like, wow, I get that.
He's been leading, he's been leading the charge for the separate...
Yeah. So, that's, you know, as far as our comments go, and our, sort of our situation, that's where we're at. And I can't stress enough that we, you know, we really want this to be a good working relationship, I think we're, we've sort of demonstrated that today, you know, and at least I hope we have. And, you know, we, the ultimate goal here is clearly keep the Bengals playing their home games in town, right? I mean, while it's not a big deal to, you know, five miles or whatever, St. Lawrence Field, you know, and two miles to Air or Shirley or whatever, right? It feels like a lot further than that, right, when you're not at your home field, and, you know, and trying to instill that pride in the program, and in your town, and giving back to your town and all that stuff, that's, you know, really sort of a big driving force behind us, wanting to stay here and figure out a way to do it.
So, I did also have one other thing.
Sure.
In the presentation itself, you kind of implied that some of you, you were basically told to pay $8,500 leave.
Ultimately...
Is that basic, what you, it comes across as that you were given an ultimatum.
No, you know, I'm sorry if it wasn't as negative as that.
That was actually the case, and if it was, who was doing that?
No, 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 it wasn't that. What it was, was, it wasn't an $8,500 relief, it was, the question I closed back was, "So, that's it, $8,500, or, you know, basically, there's no room negotiating?" The comment I received back was, "Unfortunately, no." And so, then, you know, my question back was, "Well, that's when I want to start to go down the line of questioning about, well, you know, what happens now? You know, like, what if we go to a, if we choose to play our home games at another field, how's that hurt our, you know, how's that affect practice? You know, can we still practice at Turkey Hill? Like, what, a lot of those natural questions, you know, started to come up. And so, you know, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't call it a negative or ultimatum like that, but it was more or less, here's the situation.
It is.
Yeah, I'll say that. And I had, like I said, a fantastic work relationship.
It just kind of rubbed me the wrong way if somebody was actually making an ultimatum. It didn't, it didn't hit me right.
Yeah, all right.
I wanted to get to the bottom.
It was more, like I said, it was more of, sorry.
An interpretation of, of situation.
Yeah, it was more like, sorry, this is what it is.
And that, that helps.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, no, there was no turf mowing or anything, it wasn't like a, you know, it wasn't that at all.
Okay, and that's why I wanted to make sure.
No, absolutely not, no.
And even if it was, then we would obviously want to address that.
No, no.
Because I want to address that.
No, not at all. Nope, not at all.
Can I make an editorial comment?
Yes, please, Mr. Burns.
I now have a better appreciation for the Baltimore Colts moving to...
And they did it overnight. Yeah, don't think we wouldn't move everything down to St. Lawrence overnight, that would be a mishap. Yeah, um, yeah, so, anyway, any other questions for us?
I have a question in general, procedural. Where does this go? This policy is, I'm new at this too, though I've been in town longer than everybody else.
Yeah.
But I was never on the football side, more the marching band side. But, um, but policy-wise, this is, this has been agreed on, sort of, by a tenuous document that nobody's quite sure about, or...
Yeah.
And, um, the, according to policy, it's supposed to be, the amount is supposed to be set by the school administration and approved by us. Is that correct?
And that's what Superintendent Conce was working with, Mr. Porter Marshall.
Yes.
So, so that, that was supposed to happen, but then we have this other bond issue that fell under the jurisdiction of the town.
Isn't that, yeah.
So if we were to cut that, cut the amount somehow that they are supposed to pay, we have to cut reading supplies or something somewhere to balance this off. I just want to see what this is.
We would have to have a joint meeting with the selectmen to figure that out. Because they expect us to pay the bond, yeah.
Okay, so, so where are we procedurally, I guess is my question?
Next steps.
Yeah, what would be the next step here?
Is it immediate support of selectmen? Do we renegotiate?
We would have to, because I see their numbers are very low. Their number of participants is low. In baseball, the town charges baseball a ten dollar per player fee to use Marshall Park, or the parks in town. I'm aware of that, the Parks Department charges per player. Now, if we did that for one organization, though, we would have to do that across the board. It couldn't just be for the Bengals, it would have to be LISA and...
I don't think any board or committee in town is actually a precedent-setting board.
No?
So you don't have to, no, it's not a, we've gone through that in the sewer commission, and we've been told that. So they could come back and say that, but legally, you're not a precedent-setting board.
And I'm just anticipating that they would come back to us and say we would like to renegotiate.
I would assume they would, but legally, you're not.
Because I would.
Right.
If I was on one of their boards.
Sure.
Of course I would.
This seasonal agreement required...
Which would be what you would do.
This?
No, that's not.
So what, what is this seasonal agreement?
They're using one with Superintendent Conce. You have it in your packet.
Yeah, it's a very long agreement.
It's got, white, yellow highlighted. Where did it go? I know it's here.
And the, the term agreement is, it's a lot of things about what you can do and can't do, and then, again, the cost.
And there was rain out, rained things.
Yeah, and then it was seventy-five hundred plus a thousand dollars.
Right.
So, yeah, the reason the rain out...
And where you sent the seventy-five was to the town, and the thousand was to the school.
That's correct. So the, the rain out thing that was included in there last year, um, you know, we had, I mean, we can't do anything about weather, but we, we were canceled quite a bit for practice. Can't recall when the games were, but it was definitely practices were canceled quite a bit. And yet, still, it's a tough pill to swallow, as I say, when you're being charged that much more and practices are being canceled. Obviously, understanding that there's extenuating circumstances, but it was just hard to deal with. So we wanted to try and get some language in there about, you know, what works, what happens if we're rained out, you know what I mean? Like, for practice, how does that affect them? Does it at all? You know, does it, how's that impact our ultimate...
And LISA has the same issue here.
Yeah, right.
With rain in the spring.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, like I said, I mean, it's understandable. I'd just like to see if there's a way to work through that as well. As long as we're working through other things, we might as well put it on the table.
So this agreement is...
It's not signed.
No, not signed. This draft, this draft agreement is separate.
They're totally separate.
So they would pay this fee?
That's not a big agreement.
Okay.
This was basically a promise.
That was the pledge letter, yeah, promise.
A pledge to pay this.
Right.
To, to support the...
To support the...
Bond agreement so that they could show, the town could show that they had financing to pay off the bond.
Correct.
But they want to make, but they want to make that number less.
In the agreement.
Well, that is, yeah, well, because I don't know how the school got involved in that. It's just that's a...
You were involved until after, that was twenty-sixteen.
Right.
And the school didn't get involved, that, that policy didn't get revised until May of twenty-seventeen. So the school had nothing to do with that pledge letter or anything like that. You took it over after the fact.
So would the, would this draft agreement then supersede or make that go away?
So that's, that right there is not actually even a contract or anything, so that can go away now.
It'd be like if you were to get a mortgage and the company, your mortgage company said, what do you got? Show me all your assets. What do you have coming in, right? And then you'd say, I have this, and it's a letter, let's just say from, I don't know, your employer, if you have commissions, right, but that's not showing up. And it's like, you can, you can document that you have commissions coming in that are going to count towards your income contribution.
I no longer have to worry about that letter.
You do not.
I just now need to worry about the draft.
No, what you need to worry about is the fact that we're going to have to pay off that amount.
Right.
On that letter. That's coming out.
The seventy-five hundred's got to be paid.
That will come out, we will have to talk to the town about when that money is going to come.
Seventy-five is coming.
Yeah, whether it comes from us or if the town's going to find that money.
Can I ask a question about the, about the cell tower? I, whether or not it was supposed to knowledge or not, but I think it was kind of common knowledge. It wasn't necessarily like thirty thousand dollars a year.
Mr. Laundah can answer that.
There you go.
The cell tower, when they pulled the building from it, paid thirty thousand. So it went to...
Was it one time, or was it...
No, it's, it's a, the first year was thirty thousand, there's a three percent escalator each year for twenty-plus years.
Okay.
And the bond itself's only twelve years?
The bond's twelve years, but at that point, you might be looking at...
Another...
Replacement.
Replacement turf.
Again.
Possibly, possibly. With the amount of use it's getting, you never know.
Right. The, I will say too, that the maintenance on that was, we, you know, just going back to Mr. Beardmore's comments, I mean, obviously you had a lot of kids using it, but the maintenance on it wasn't good either.
No, that is, the town with the parks and the...
Right, but now, my, you know...
And hopefully it's being maintained properly.
Yes.
Now. So hopefully, the, the life of the turf may last longer than...
Right, I know we can't count on that, but it's, can be hopeful.
But it should, if you maintain it properly.
It should, right.
That is the hope, to save the town people money.
Mm-hmm.
I think we learned our lesson from the last one. So we need to continue to work on the draft, figure out what the agreement is with them, and at the same time, figure out how that seventy-five hundred's going to get...
That is separate, worked up.
Oh, that is separate. This is what they're here, okay.
One further comment?
That is separate.
Sorry, my apologies, sorry, you can answer. One further comment, time is kind of out of the essence with us, season's coming up, right? In fact, we have, um, practice actually starts next week for some of the older grades, seven and eight, and the younger grades are going to start the week of the thirtieth. Games, our Jamboree will not be here this year, it'll be in Clinton, so we're okay there, and that's on the nineteenth. The schedule has not been released yet, so I do not know when our home games are. Yeah, but the first game, I do know this, the first game weekend is the twenty-sixth, is the week of the twenty-sixth, so a weekend of the twenty-fifth, I should say, twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
So we don't know if it'll be here yet.
We don't know if it's going to be here.
But we do want to...
I'm sorry?
And the, the policy does say we're not supposed to start anything until we have a signed agreement.
Right, so that's why we're trying to, now, we didn't have an agreement, I don't believe that, I'm not sure, maybe you can tell me, practice was in there, practice fields was in there. I don't believe it was. So if that's...
It's not in here?
If it's not, then we should be okay to practice down in Turkey Hill, continue to do so. But, um, you know, games-wise, we can't do anything, you know, not a contract, obviously.
The question is, when, when would you actually be able to talk to the town and...
That's totally separate. That will, that is just going to be separate.
Okay.
Yes.
So the other question is...
I know.
Are you going to...
Well, that's what I'm talking about, you can do right now.
Are you hoping to apply and draw now, so that actually falls under your...
This is now Dr. Burnham. And then, keep in mind, though, that if an adjustment is made, requests for renegotiation are likely to follow from other organizations.
Yes, yes.
So not only will we have to find in the current budget, money to offset any reduction that we agreed to for this organization, we have to anticipate that there will be other monies that we will have to find, in our fairness, to other organizations that come forward with the same request. Correct.
But I'm also not sure any other organizations have the same commitment. Also, keep in mind that most of the other organizations in town's overheads are pale in comparison dollars, just, oh, just throw it out there. I was just definitely the most expensive sport to learn. So it's not really an apples-to-apples type thing, so...
Right, so that, no, I don't know that, that, that anything will happen, but...
Would you be, would you be open to this year, if we come to an agreement on a fair number, as a flat rate, just for the year, one payment, flat for the year, keeping in mind that we've been negotiating a rate, right, going forward for next season?
The idea being that that might happen faster, to just settle on a rate for now, and then work it out for a future year.
Correct. Provided it works for both parties, of course, but yes, yeah.
Just to... Because we're leading the game now, and it's one of those...
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
And I think to, to Mr. Beardmore's point as well, we have an understanding of the cost for maintenance of the field, that that can inform our decision in negotiating future rates.
Correct.
With all the parts.
Right.
Right.
I would say that the timeline actually for negotiating future rates is critical for us as well, because we'll need to know as we...
That's in the budget in a couple of months, yeah.
We're obviously available whenever, whenever that needs to be done.
So, do you want to meet with them separate? Yeah, I think they're probably...
You can do this, right?
Yeah.
Because I'm not going to be around.
I know.
That's why I had to be today, I'm going to be gone.
So we, we work with...
You'll work with Dr. Burnham?
And then, and then the next, if we come up with a fee structure that works for this, this year, then the next meeting, you guys would approve it?
If we could probably get something, yeah.
Yeah, if it's done, then we can get on the agenda. Is there another July meeting?
No.
So it's next, it'll be August.
It will be August.
So we'll work with...
We've got a calendar on the agenda for having before.
We are working on our calendar after this.
Later on this.
We don't have a calendar for the summer, it's hard in the summer months to get a quorum.
I get it, yeah, I agree, yeah.
With all occasions, yeah.
Okay, so...
Yeah, one of us is missing, so...
I noticed.
Yeah.
So if we could work with...
You would work with Kate?
Yeah.
And then she would bring the proposal to us at our next meeting.
Okay.
Which we'll decide on in a, in a few minutes.
Do you, would you like me to email you tomorrow or tonight and see what, what your calendar looks like?
Sure.
And go from there. I'm pretty flexible, I want to meet you whenever. Does anybody vote for us again?
And then we will have to have a joint meeting.
So the office is going to be...
Yeah.
So we, if we start hiring, we can hold those next week.
Yeah.
Right, is that, are we going to make, we ever do that?
That's the key.
And she was looking for a thousand.
Okay.
Otherwise, yeah, okay.
They're wondering about practices.
Practices. Next week, is that, they're going to be allowed to do that, if that's not done? Yeah, on the, you're used Turkey Hill, right?
Yeah, we all...
That's a reduced fee, that one is, that's not, Mr. Laundah, what was the cost of Turkey Hill?
I think it was nothing.
We've never paid for it.
Yeah, we've never paid for it.
We were three dollars an hour.
Three dollars an hour?
We can negotiate that.
Yeah.
Can we put that on the next agenda?
Three bucks, three bucks.
We're nonviolent.
Alright, so, so the answer's yes right now, we can't stop practice next week.
Yeah, you're using the Tur, the Turkey Hill graph.
That's right.
It's dirt and grass, but...
Yeah, don't make us feel any more inspired.
Which is why it's three dollars.
It's going to be more dirt.
And also, the girls...
Where do they practice?
Um, usually in the circle of twenty p.
Oh, in front of the building?
Little circle graph, or sometimes on the side of...
The chair.
I suggested that they use the side, because they're in that little turnaround circle there, which I always see them standing there. I never even realized that's actually where they practice.
And it's, and it's a two-way street now, used to be.
Yeah, you're right.
I told them...
It was always one-way, and so...
Which is where we used to practice for flag football, we used to be on the side of, of there, and now that there's no longer extended day there, I don't think, so it's like, I think it's open.
No, extended day's not there.
Oh, right, so I think it's open.
Yeah.
But yeah, the skate park.
The skate...
Oh, jeez.
You got a couple of years for that.
Which, by the way, another great endeavor by the town, I love that, the community coming together on that, it's been pretty cool to watch. Yeah, they're awesome kids, actually, I know them all from lacrosse, they're just fantastic people in general, so I'm rooting for them.
They all, they look, no?
Almost all.
Almost all of them do.
Almost, yeah, but they're, they're just great, just great kids in general, I'm really happy for that, so. Anyway, so if we could, I'll get on your calendar, yep, and we can talk, and then, um, you know, from my perspective, I just want to thank everybody for hearing us out. Obviously, an important issue that affects hundreds of kids in town, and, um, you can see, like I said, the passion for the program is pretty strong, so, I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Jane, and have a nice vacation, and welcome aboard.
Yeah, again, thank you.
Chris, what's up? Yeah, go, go. Yeah.
There's so many people there.
Oh, yeah, we're going to, yep, yep, we're going to, we, we now, the, all business, not appointment. Well, look at our list, we have to appoint you for several things, don't we? And I noticed that my name was missing off, one of those, that I, was the sick leave... They're leaving already, Mr. Burns?
No, big bad.
Okay.
Bad penny always returns.
Okay. What are you going to mean, this next one?
Um, the sick leave bank, it was Don Marie and Mr. Tassidy.
Oh, there you are.
Then I was going to be there.
Okay.
Okay, so we need to appoint her as G, Superintendent of Schools, we need to appoint Dr. Burnham and Executive Board Member to FLAC Collaborative. So I need a motion to appoint the G and H to the second phase.
I'll make a...
Also appear.
Where else? Oh, yeah, wait, wait, what was that? Spokesperson, yeah, okay. So I'll make a motion to appoint Superintendent Burnham for spokesperson, Superintendent of Schools and Executive Board Member to FLAC Collaborative.
I will accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. You're officially our spokesperson now.
Thank you.
And I don't think we, I don't think we have to reappoint me, because I think it was in the...
It was there, it's just missing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, third reading of the policies, that required addition of pregnancy or pregnancy-related conditions to the protected classes in the following policies, we, that is our third and final reading, so I need a motion to approve those changes in the policies.
I need the links of the policy changes for policies four-one-zero-six, four-two-zero-two-point-oh-one, four-two-zero-two-point-oh-two, five-one-zero-three-point-oh-one, five-two-zero-one-point-oh-one, five-two-one-eight, five-four-zero-two, five-eight-zero-one, and five-eight-zero-one-point-oh-two to include pregnancy or pregnancy-related conditions.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, please.
Yes.
My name is Dave Rogers, I live at eighty...
Oh, she's got you, okay.
Are we going to bounce back up to...
I live at eighty-two Highland Street, I have, I have two questions. Is there a cost associated with the mentoring program that you're involved in?
Yes, there is.
And what is that?
Um, I believe year one is forty-nine hundred dollars.
And the second and third year?
Uh, second year is, I believe, thirty-six hundred dollars. I'm not sure about the cost for year three, and I believe the way it reads in the contract is that the committee and I would determine the value of a third year. So right now, the commitment is for the two.
Okay, alright. Second question I have, when you go out for publication for the athletic director, will that position also be for the dean of students?
No.
Thank God.
It's just going to be athletic director.
I mean, I, I, when I read that, I said, I, I don't believe this.
Correct, it's just athletic director, we took, we took away, because I thought I'd need that comment last time that you brought it up, it's supposed to just athletic director, correct? Okay.
But let's be clear, that the athletic director will be involved in student-athlete related incidents?
Only student-athletes.
Student-athletes, so if, if there's any kind of game, they would be involved in the investigation.
That goes without saying.
Yes.
But, but there's a, I think a big difference between dean of students and, and that involvement.
Correct.
Okay, so it's...
No, none.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Rogers, this is Dr. Burnham.
Hi, Dr. Burnham, welcome to Luna, I've heard nothing but good things about you from a bunch of people out in the educational community and, and the environment, so I'm welcome, and I'm sure that you'll do a good job for us.
I hope so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we'll fall back to the calendar.
Okay.
Why do people here for a reason?
I do.
Okay, when people come to us, they're here for a reason, right? Okay, guys, did you look at the calendar? The first one is off, we can't have it. You don't have four of us.
Is that the first?
Did I have two? Oh, do you have two? No, no, it's here. Oh, I put it in my folder. Did I?
Oh, I have...
You took my...
I circled this one, did you circle it?
Yep. You took my August 1st. Okay. August 1st, we don't have a quorum. When I asked everyone, three of us were gone. So, we cannot have it August 1st. But I think everyone was available the 15th, correct? Was anybody missing the 15th?
Not that many.
Okay, and I don't think many much. Okay, so the next meeting would be the 15th. Then, all of them, it's just the first and the third of the month, other, unless it's noted off.
Saturday, Friday.
Yeah. Right. So, Dr. Burnham would like to do a workshop meeting with...
With the entire committee.
Yeah.
I know that MASC, Dr. Cassidy as an example, does workshops for superintendent and members of the committee. One such workshop, as an example, is around communication, roles, responsibilities, that sort of topic. I think it could be quite valuable.
Sure. So, in August sometime, would you be able to do a workshop meeting?
Probably.
Can you guys look at your calendars?
Well, there's 30 some odd days in August, right? 31?
Yeah.
So, sometime is open and it's... Do we narrow it down to a day?
And it would most likely be an evening?
It could be. I have known these sorts of workshop meetings to happen even on Saturday mornings sometimes. So, I think as long as we could find a date that not only worked for everyone here, but also with Doris.
So, do you want to just...
Maybe I could jump to Doris and find out her availability.
Yeah, and then let us know. Yeah. Okay? And then we'll schedule a workshop.
Okay.
So, the next meeting, school committee goals and the draft capital plan.
So, would those items then get moved into the August 15th?
Yes.
And put in, or would they get moved down?
No, we need to do both.
Okay.
Extended day update and handbook, were they really coming in August?
Say that again?
The extended day people were really gonna come to present us about the handbook? I know that we do have to approve it, their handbook.
It's not based on last year's calendar.
Did they come last year? I don't... I know they came, but I didn't think it was in the summer.
So, last year's calendar, August 2nd, they had extended day update handbook on the agenda or on the list.
Oh, they must have come.
It wasn't on the original copy, so they must have come.
All right, do we want to ask them to come?
The 15th?
Yeah. So, would you reach out to Tammy Perry? She wants to meet you. You know, you might want to set up a meeting with her anyway.
Yes.
So, do we want our school committee goals, extended day update and handbook, and the draft capital plan? Mr. Launda, are you gonna have that ready?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, those three items will be on August 15th.
School committee goals? And what are your thoughts relative to superintendent's goals for the next year?
I know we haven't even... Your entry plan. Really, it would basically be your entry plan.
Okay.
So, maybe you could draft her entry plan and extend it?
And present it.
Yes, and given, yeah. You're like a year, right?
Yep.
Okay. And then these we fill in. A lot of them are budget. And then special ed seating, so they give us their budgets. And then we fill in what's left here and fill in as needed. Oh, okay, at some point, we're gonna want to have the update on the numbers for athletics, right?
Yeah. We did that in...
Because we approved the waiver.
Right, and they provided an update as to whether they needed the waiver or how that went and where the numbers.
Yeah, we need that before sports, don't we? What do you think, athletic advisor?
Was that before the sports started or just at the beginning, just to generally update? Because we've already allowed them to use the waiver should they need it, and then you just update if they actually didn't need it.
I thought we'd already done that.
We did the waiver. We approved the waiver. I just wanted to know what the numbers are that they're asking.
Oh.
So, you would be looking for an update prior to each season?
Yeah.
Numbers, if they actually use the waiver.
So, we'd have fall sports, winter sports, spring sports.
And spring sports.
And where they're using the waiver.
Or if they need...
Because it... Basically, from what it sounds like, we aren't gonna need a waiver for football. We did last year. It didn't sound like we were gonna this year.
Doesn't sound like we are.
And the only place we should need a waiver would be cross-country. Or they would ask for a waiver. We don't actually technically need a waiver across-country because you don't need...
But they like to be able to involve as many as they can.
Yeah.
So, maybe the September 5th meeting makes sense for an update on numbers for the fall sports.
Fall sports.
Sports.
We're just mentioning there were a couple of spots that still refer to fiscal year 19. Need to change that.
Just gotta check the... Oh, the numbers.
Oh, 18, it says. 18 capital plan.
Yeah, there's 18 up there and there's 19 further down.
Proven that it goes from Technology 20, then Athletic 19, 19, 20.
Yeah, just to make it hot.
And April 3rd.
Yep.
So, are you thinking that maybe the December 5th meeting might be the appropriate meeting for an update for winter sports?
It's usually tryouts are at the end of November. Yeah.
Well, the athletic comes with the purpose budget, so that might be here.
Yeah, winter sports don't usually require waivers. The only one that they would use a waiver for would be indoor track, but they don't usually necessarily need that because a lot of athletics, we have basketball and they're very small teams. And so, some of the athletes just play.
So, I'm thinking that perhaps really all we might need is a memo?
Yes, we don't need a presentation.
And just attached and on the agenda as an update?
Yeah. We don't need anyone coming in here and presenting at that time.
And then what about for the spring sports?
So, that's usually the tryout, or March, the third Monday, Tuesday, and March, the third Monday in March, they start, so March 6th.
March 6th.
Yeah.
And we want an update or a memo?
Spring sports. I think a memo, although I don't know.
Well, perhaps by year, there are waivers.
Then we...
We may have something more than a memo.
Right. And softball requires waivers. Okay. And all the other stuff we usually fill in as we progress because a lot of it's budget. And then as things come up. Correct?
Yep.
Okay, so the other thing that was on here... Oh, okay, so are we done with that then for now? The dates are good?
Do we have to approve this calendar?
Yep.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the dates. The dates for the Heelenberg School Committee meeting calendar?
As presented?
And edited because...
As edited.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, our next meeting is August 15th. So, we have a report from Dr. Burnham on the primary principal search committee. How that's going?
So, as you know, the search committee forwarded two candidates. I interviewed each of the candidates along with Mr. Cassidy and deliberated around the decision and came to the decision that I felt that this hire is very, very important. I find for myself and all my experience in education, I believe that the years for our primary school are critical. They're foundational. Our students are set up potentially for a lifetime of loving school and loving learning. And we teach some of the most critical foundational skills in terms of literacy and basics in math. If we do that job well, we set them up for a lifetime of success in all the grades that follow. I wanted to be sure that the person that we hire into this position is the right fit for the school as well as for the district leadership team for the district. After weighing the information that I had available relative to each candidate, their experience, et cetera, I felt that I didn't have a high level of confidence that one candidate over the other was the right match. Because I don't feel at this point that I have a good working knowledge of the personality of the school, the dynamic of the school, the direction in which we might want to move the school, things that we might want to maintain and celebrate. So, I know that in my experience, I've seen principals appointed, and when they are not a good match, they aren't successful. And if they aren't successful, that impacts the success of our students. So, I wanted to have a high level of confidence that I was appointing somebody that I felt was the right match. And I felt that this decision was important enough that it was worth pressing pause, finding an interim, hopefully somebody that has some good experience as an administrator to come in, maintain, help us move, you know, forward for a year, and make sure that when we repost for the permanent hire, that we can feel confident that we have the right match. As I say, I can't say for certain that the two candidates performing were definitely not a match, but I didn't have a high level of confidence in making an appointment that I was confident that I had somebody that I felt was the right match. And in my mind, it's what the staff deserves, it's what the students deserve. It's very important for the district as a whole. It's a critical, critical appointment in my mind. So, I want to make sure that we get it right. So, we reposted the position as an interim for the upcoming year. And as I indicated, you know, we have a fair number of applicants for this interim position. Priority obviously will be given to those who have administrative experience. And again, I would be looking for somebody who not only had a strong skill set, you know, depth of experience, but a good, good character. Somebody that embodies the core values of this district, the vision of the district. And that's what I'd be looking for in a permanent hire as well. This person is going to be a critical role model for our youngest learners. It's a very, in my mind, a very, very important hire. And I want to make sure that we get it right. So, posting closes today. We will start digging in tomorrow to sort to and prioritize, based on experience, the candidates that have applied. And we'll start to schedule some interviews right away for those that we think are most promising. Again, the objective here would be to have somebody hired as soon as possible because other staff hires are waiting for this hire.
For kindergarten teacher.
Right.
I would anticipate that there's a high level of anxiety with the staff. They were... There's always, when change happens, there's always gonna be a level of anxiety, but they were perhaps expecting that there would be somebody permanent in that place, and now they know this is gonna be a true transition year. Have you spoken to any of the staff or done anything to help alleviate that kind of, that stress that they might be feeling at this time?
So, a communication went out to all staff relative to that process and my decision there, as well as an update as to how we were progressing with the other positions that are posted. I also met this week with the members of the search committee. So, you know, I promised in my interview that two-way communication is really critical. And I think particularly when you have constituency that is disappointed, frustrated, maybe even angry at the outcome. So, we had everybody in, we met, we talked. My sense, and Jim and Heather were there as well, my sense was that I believe that I've alleviated some of that hard feeling since I was able to process through with them the belief structure I just shared with you, that this is a very important hire. And you can share your takeaways. I felt that most folks were happy to have had the opportunity for the conversation and they felt somewhat better about the steps moving forward. But absolutely, I totally understand how, you know, the unknown can impact how people feel about the upcoming year. So, I'll be working hard to make sure that they all feel supported and that we make sure that we get them the right leader to hopefully lead the building forward for many years.
I'm sure many of them are ready to step up and help whoever...
I'm sure that they are. I'm sure that they are. As Matt said, some of the staff members, as we were exiting the meeting the other day, actually expressed that to me. You know, we'll do what we have to do to make it work. It was very reassuring for me.
They were also very reassured in the fact that your focus was on what was right for the students and the kids that were going to be learning in the environment. And I thought that they really appreciated that focus. Yes, I did spend a lot of time vetting candidates. I did believe that they had two qualified candidates that probably would have been happy with either one of them. But once Dr. Burnham explained her thought process, I think it eliminated the anxiety that some of them had that they'd spent so much time doing this and they didn't get anywhere. And they understood where she was coming from. So, I think that was a very positive meeting.
So, we're gonna keep an optimistic outlook that we're gonna find a really strong candidate to lead the building for at least the next year, and we'll repost for a permanent hire. I would imagine that we would want to get...
We've been sitting still too long. Oh, my God.
Time's up.
Oh, my God.
Bad joke.
Knowing that there might be some applicants that we might put into these interim positions who are hoping for it to be more than just the one year, hoping to be considered...
Long-term.
Long-term. They would apply again for the permanent position. In the event that they aren't selected and appointed for the permanent position, I would want to be sure, you know, really as a point of professional currency, to move this process early in the year after the holiday season, when, you know, more people would be available to participate in the search committee process. So that if any of the candidates that we hire as interns who were hoping to stay longer than the one year are not the selected candidate for the permanent appointment, that they have an opportunity to pursue other positions beyond this next school year. I think that that's only fair. So, that would be the anticipated timeline. Sometime shortly after the new year, the start of the new calendar year, that we would start to map out a timeline for a search process to hire somebody in a permanent position.
And with the interim positions, you're looking for people with experience?
That would be the hope.
In this role, correct?
Yeah, because, you know, we're rapidly approaching midway through the summer months. You know, essentially, school opens in about five, four, five weeks.
Just don't say it.
So, in my mind, I've got to get folks on board quickly, very quickly, which prohibits really a fully involved search process to hire an interim position. Because we, in my mind, we really have to get these positions filled very, very quickly because they've got to come in, get acclimated, and be ready to open the building. They've got to hire any open positions in their building, you know, prepare communications out to families, be prepared to welcome students back. So, time is rapidly ticking away and, you know, we're all aware of that clock ticking. We really want to get folks in and up to speed so we have a smooth opening for the new year. Okay?
Yep.
That's my advice for you.
Well, we gave some of that up there earlier. Again, our focus was banking on the session stand issue. So, we had some issues, questions about the permit process, so I see Ken some additional information on that. We briefly talked about scheduling games and things during vacation weeks, but we didn't have a quorum to really delve into it, nor did we have an A.D. to help lead that discussion. So, we're holding it off really until we get an A.D. in place.
Well, that was like spring break and Christmas break.
Spring, yeah, April break.
Right. Because then it conflicts with the... If they have a spring break one, game, they can't take the spring break.
Well, not just that, then. The foreign... They go to Italy and stuff.
The Italy trip.
Oh.
And at the same time.
That's right.
But they have to choose one or the other.
They would have to choose one or the other, and if you're on a varsity sport, you technically can't...
If you're on a, to varsity, you could lose your spot.
Yeah, you, you could be penalized.
Yeah, so, um, that is definitely a, a thing to discuss. There seemed, of the half a dozen people that were there, there was a, it was a mixed...
A mixed bag.
Bag of, of people. Some said would go on vacation anyway and hope that they cancel the games, which they have been doing, so...
Well, it's raining. Snow, hope for rain.
So, then, our, and so, you know, basically, it was it. Relative to that, I did inform them about the meeting tonight with Mr. Dean Yates, Mr. Del Santa, and that our next meeting is going to be on September 4th.
September 4th?
At 7:00 P.M.
When everyone's back from vacation?
When everyone is back from vacation. Our expectation is to, in that meeting, set our priorities for the year. We're planning on ninety minutes for that meeting, no more.
Okay, good.
And then we're going to focus our agendas on one topic. We may be meeting monthly...
That's okay.
Instead of four times a year, like the, the policy...
Well, that's a...
Suggested, or required.
That was a requirement.
Right, at least four times a year.
You can meet more than that if you want, you're the chair.
Yeah, yeah, I know. So, we're going to probably be meeting monthly.
And one topic in that, a meeting might be more, you know...
More beneficial, more efficient, yes.
We could get more...
We, we tried to bite off a lot last year.
I know you did. I was having those meetings.
Well, there was a lot to, to, like, where to start.
It was, well, you know, where do we start? And so, now we have a, a basic framework of what, what we're going to do, and, and we're creating a wheel here.
I know.
So, we've got the rough shape...
And we'll, we'll, at the September 4th meeting, because sports will have started, or will be starting right around there, the snack shack issue. Right now, I just wanna tell people, it's just pizza.
It is just pizza, it is prepared foods.
Just what we did for La Crosse, sorry, last season.
It's chips...
Chips, candies, sodas, water, Gatorade.
Yeah. But the, the, the new wrinkle to that is having to pull a permit.
Wait, we have to pull a permit for that?
Everybody has, whoever's participating in selling in the concession stand has to pull a permit. And so, what we don't know is who is the permit coming from, and under what auspices is it for? Is it for being able to sell food? And then if we're selling food, do we have to collect sales tax? Do we have to collect the recycling fee on cans for sodas? I don't know these things. So, I've, I've emailed Dean, he's, he was kinda leading the, the charge there, and started asking. And it's, you have to have the permit two weeks prior to the event, and it has to be applied for in person.
Okay, and we don't know if it's for every event?
And we don't know if it's an event by, or each occurrence, or each instance?
Like, or to be like, field hockey season, football season?
Yeah, between these dates, and these are the things that we wanna sell. It, it really is coming, coming out very prohibitive for any organization, and not just Leinburg, but they are cracking down throughout...
The showbo.
The area, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, when, when Mr. Quatermont said that they would, they would get hit, everybody's getting hit. It really is...
Oh, yeah.
And it's more than just three things.
And if the permit costs money, and they're making, like, let's say, cause like, La Crosse...
Right, if it's fifty dollar permit.
Hundred dollars a night, and the permit is thirty dollars. It's not really worth cost-effective to even open the snack shack?
It's not.
And trying to get the volunteers to staff it, to schedule it.
Right, so, it's, we're, we're gathering the information, I'm gonna be sharing it with the, the athletic, uh, committee. I'll be copying you and, and the, and Dr. Burnham. So, that everybody's aware, and that we can discuss it further in, in this group.
Yeah, we have to make sure all the booster clubs are aware of that, too.
They will be informed, uh, so I've got all, well, at least I've got the booster club participants from the athletic advisory in a distribution list.
Okay.
So, I can send it to them.
Yeah.
Hopefully, if, I've got everybody, if you're not on the distribution list, your booster club...
Will you see TV on that, so we can see who's on?
Oh, yeah, we'll see.
Okay, alright.
Well, just...
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, because I might know somebody who's not on that list.
You probably do know people, but I don't...
So, that, I just wanna make sure that you might have everybody here.
Uh, but those are all the names from the original list that I had, uh, we have, had a couple of replacements.
Well, gradually repaired, yeah.
And soccer have replaced. And then Mr. Powell has, has, I got an email from him today that he was gonna step back.
From La Crosse?
Well, he was gonna step back from the committee. He has enough to do otherwise, so I thanked him for his help.
Okay.
And just make sure that we have somebody to cover that from La Crosse.
Okay.
That's where we're at with athletic advisory. Any questions?
So, that's, oh, Blizzard bags.
That, that doesn't seem to make sense to do anything with Blizzard bags, when we don't have principals in place.
Not yet, right? Maybe next year?
We can bring it up again in the fall.
Yeah.
But it doesn't make sense to me to take a look at that until the players are here.
I would agree. Uh, yeah, absolutely. Okay. So, that, we'll just keep that on for topics.
We'll just keep it on there for topics.
Right.
Yeah, it's fine.
Oh, and the other, um, I'm sorry, athletic advisory, there was a, some discussion around policy of, um, setting up the policy, the, around...
Around what?
Around, what were we talking about? The policing, the, the concessions stand. You know, the policy around who can do it, uh, who...
And don't have to clean up storage, that's...
They would have to get a key, too.
So, the, right, so the policy would be established by us, this is, you know, who...
To make sure it's being enforced.
Right, who's going to enforce the policy? So, we've got the policy, and then we'll have the procedure on, here's where you get the key, this is what you have to do, you're required to clean up, and follow, yeah, separating the policy and the procedure. So, when, so, the, the recommendation was that the, the school committee, policy subcommittee would work on a policy around the use of the concessions stand.
Cause sometimes if you overpolicy yourself, there's no way to police it.
Right. So, and then, you know...
But do you appoint procedures?
We, right, we would come up with, we would have the policy, and then, you know, Mr. Laund had already come up with quite a few procedures in, in his draft, so I think there's a, a, a medium there that we can, we can work on, and get that moving forward. But I don't know when the next policy subcommittee meeting is, so we have...
Who's on?
You and I.
Me and you?
Yeah.
Well, then we have to make a, we have to pick a date with, um, Kate.
But not in the next two weeks.
But not on the first.
I won't be here. So, after I come back, I can do one.
After you come back and talk.
Okay. Alright, we'll talk after, yeah. Then I'll be ready to work again, maybe. Alright, so, uh, we can adjourn the meeting then?
I'll make a motion to adjourn 9:39.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.